Welcome everybody to the February 12th meeting of the Hoyokai School Committee. Just a few quick housekeeping announcements. On Monday, March 23rd, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law, other than the extension, extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding open meetings. It's hereby given in accordance with Chapter 28, Acts of 2009, Section 17 to 20 of the Magistrates of General Law, that a regular meeting of the Hoyokai School Committee will be held, and we will now begin with a roll call.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Brunel.
Here.
Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Mr. Romero. Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Dr. Rivera-Cologne. Dr. Gloria Caballero.
Present.
Mr. Wellahan. Mr. Colomore.
Here.
And Ms. Wilson.
Here.
I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. And one more quick announcement pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of this meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed on the city's community TV channel. So we will begin tonight with student showcase. Mr. Soto, I believe we have Hoyokai Dean Campus Student CTE Program.
Yes, we do have some students here from the Dean Campus, and we're just gonna allow them to speak about some of their work. I'm not, are you representing them, or is Ms. Carrachulo joining via Zoom? Both? I did promote, oh, she, so Ms. Carrachulo is a panelist, so Ms. Carrachulo, you wanna come off mute?
Good evening, everybody. We're very proud to have a few of our students in house for you. One, we have Lakasha. She's going to speak in both English and Spanish about her recent 11th grade experience in clinical. Secondly, we have an auto collision student Izzy, who's going to share for you a very special rendition of the Dean logo that he presented to me. Ms. Bermudas is there to guide our students up to the stage.
You guys can speak whenever you're ready. Just make sure your green light is on, on your microphone, and talk into your microphone. Yep, there you go.
My name is Israel Lopez. My shop is Auto Collision, and my grade is, I'm a junior. And what I have in my hand is what I did in my shop. So, guys, ask around. So, basically, what, that is a custom plastic hood. A little story behind this is that what we had the freshmen do in our class, we give them these little plastic hoods to work on, as if in reality, our actual hood would be. And, you know, it was the end of the day for me, and I just wanted to do something that would be a little fun. So I decided to customize it myself. And basically, I'm gonna tell you guys how the process of that would go. And first, you would begin with sanding it. Sanding it with the same way if you would do to our actual car, you'll send it with a grit near 320 or 400. We use a scuff pad or, or the actual sanding block. And then we'll prime it. Basically, what primer would do, it would act as an overcoating, and it will overall help it during the long run as well. Then we'll add guide coat. Guide coat is, it will help us see the parts that need to be sanded. Furthermore, with that, we would sand it with an even higher grit. When it comes to sanding, the higher the grit, the more finer it will be. Would wet sand it with 600 grit. Then after that's done, we would just spray it to our color. So they, basically, this is the same way you would do to a car, so if you wanna customize your car, change it to a whole different color, you'd have to sand it to get all of that other paint off. Then, after we colored the background, as you can see, it's like a pinkish reddish. Then we would sand it again with an even higher grit. Not to dig inside of it, dig down in it, but just to make it dull. Because it's not really good to customize something that is, that already has like that after spray on it and that shininess, because it can, it can cause, it can cause, cause the paint just to slide right off of it. So, after doing that, that's when I added my own design. I used something called Pasca markers. Basically, they're markers, but they are paint. So first I had my, when it, same thing when it comes to painting, just like how background and you add outline, and then you go even deeper and you do details. That's the same way that I did with my markers. Then after I was done with the design that I picked, I had my teacher, he went to go put something called pearl. If you would see on the, on the hood, it has like this shiny glittery look, kinda look, that is what pearl is. The different color type of pearl, that's why it has a pinkish look. Then after so, we had something called clear coat. Clear coat is what gives it that shiny finish. How we do it. This is the same way that if I would do to an actual car, which I have done before, and I have done it to things that are metal. I have my locker, always in our shop have lockers that are customized for one type of way.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lyska Rodriguez, and I'm here representing the Health Assisting Shop. I'm in my junior year here at Dean Tech. A little bit about what we do, I'm part of the Health Assisting Shop, which is the CNA program. You get your CNA certification, which is a really good base to start off with anything within the medical field. It's a good first step. You could branch out to so many other things within that. A little bit about what we do here is 9th grade and 10th grade is more about the bookwork. You really gotta get down the knowledge before really getting on to anything else. We spend our time within the classroom and doing skills here and there, based on what we're learning. Junior and senior year, that's kind of when you branch out to more stuff. Junior year, which is the year I'm in, we do clinicals. We're actually going on clinical right now, which we go to different nursing homes, hospitals, and we help out the nurse aides, the nurses, with anything that they need. And we get our clinical hours. Those clinical hours apply over to our CNA. So we're able to take our CNA test, and once you take your CNA test, you're able to go out and apply for co-op. Co-op, instead of coming to school during your shop week, you go out and you do your job, based on your shop. A lot of our seniors and juniors are actually applying within that senior year. Basically, you don't even come to schools during your shop week, you go on to your co-op, and from there, you branch out to anything you wanna do.
Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, you're both so eloquent with how you shared your information. I'm just wondering, what are you thinking of doing, what's your vision for after graduation?
My vision for after graduation, I'd like to continue my education in college. I'd like to get my Bachelor's in Science of Nursing, get my RN, and try to branch out to different units from there, specifically labor and delivery, but, you know, the future takes us to different places.
Awesome. Thank you.
Pretty much the same thing with hers, but instead of going to college, just wanna go right into career. And pretty, like, exactly how she wants to just branch out into different ways. I just, I always really been good at art. I wanna do that, but with cars.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Young lady, I want to thank you for that career field. We really need nurses, honey. That field is kinda thin right now, so that is wonderful, so I'll be saying a prayer for you. Keep it up, okay?
Thank you, yes. It's a field that really takes a lot of heart and hard work to get into.
So at one point in your senior year, do you guys take your certifications to graduate with your CNA license?
We actually take our CNA our junior year. Once you finish your clinical hours, you're able to take your CNA test.
So you need that in order to go on co-op probably then, right?
Yeah, if your co-op requires the CNA certification.
Okay, that makes sense. And how about you, young sir? Do you guys get some certifications to go right into? Will you graduate with certain classifications within the automotive field?
I do believe that you need a certain hours, and you need your ultras certification.
All right.
And I don't really, that's pretty much, I think it's pretty much it.
Awesome. Well, thank you both. Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for coming up. It's really refreshing. I think both of you just exude confidence, and no matter what you do, like, that confidence is gonna bring you far places, so keep it up. I didn't see either one of you display being nervous. I love the fact that you're going to college. I went to Dean, I graduated in 99, but still went to college. A lot of, you know, a lot of people in the community think that just 'cause you go to Dean does, uh, means your education stops there, but many of our students actually choose to further, and many of our students choose to join the workforce. It really is, you know, an option that we want them to have. So if they choose to either pursue college or to pursue career, that's what Dean is all about. Like, you have that option when you graduate, and it just warms my heart, like, keep that confidence that you have.
Key. Mr. Colomore?
How many students from your class are in class?
At the present time, from our class of 2025, I'm pretty sure we have about a good 60% to 70% of students that either are out on co-op right now, or are getting through the application process to go out to co-op.
As for me and my grade, none of us have really... Oh, for senior, for counting senior as well, I think it's pretty much the same ratio for me, maybe a little bit less, I would say 40%. And as for us right now, I would, like, from other people I hear, from people who go on co-op, this year has been really fast. Me, myself is, is almost there.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your time.
Congrats for Mrs. Carrachulo. I'm so proud of you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to public comment, I don't think we have anybody that's signed up. Josh, check that list, right? Nobody? I don't think we have anybody in person, but I did get emailed one comment. So I'll read that for the record real quick. Faith Glanville at 33 Driscoll Lane, she's sending this message along in gratitude. She wishes us to please continue to seek answers. We owe it to the community, as the message being sent in the city does not deserve democracy. The message being sent to the city is that we don't deserve democracy. And we, the state, are in charge, because the grownups in Hoyokai do not know how to care for the children. Educators, city leaders, and the parents, this simply is not true. Like all cities, we have children that need education and adults that love them. That's the only public comment I received, so we will move right on to communications and reports. We'll start with our student reports, and I see our reps from Hoyokai North Campus are here with us this evening, so you guys can take it away.
Thank you. So to start off, we had 8th grade visits during the beginning of January. They went really well. They were very interested in the topics we had to show them, and they were very interested in the academies we had. But recently, we went to some 8th grade schools, we helped them choose their course selections. Even though they might go to Dean, they still had to fill it out as part of the procedure. They were very interested in the classes they had to take, and they were just very excited for their upcoming high school experience. And then for, they also picked their academies for 9th grade. 9th graders this year picked their academies. They helped, they helped 9th graders understand what each of the academies has to offer, and they were very excited to go into these academies.
This month, our redesign team will be working on a spring into your academy plan, which is essentially field trips for our academies for 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. Our performing and media arts academies will be visiting the University of Massachusetts Amherst and Keene State University alongside Smith College. Our Community and Global Studies Academy will be visiting the University of Connecticut and Westfield State, and our Engineering and Life Sciences Academy will be visiting the University of Massachusetts and Western New England. And then Yale University will be an option for all three academies. We are also planning family and community events, trying to reach out to more of our students' families and just build a stronger community at our school. And a few weeks ago, our school matchwits team recorded their show.
You're on it.
Yeah. Which will be airing March 2nd at 7:00, so tune in to see if we win. Finally, our Hoyokai School Theater Company completed their second play of the year, "Noise is Off." It was a very nice comedy, and I believe it was fantastic. And will now be working on our musical for the end of the year.
Can you say what it is yet?
We don't know.
Awesome. Thank you. And when you were mentioning all those wonderful trips, is there a senior class trip planned for this year? I know you guys aren't seniors, but...
The seniors are working on it. I don't think they finalized it yet, but they, they think they might have some idea of what it is. I don't know what it is.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
All right. Signups for the Seal of Biliteracy are currently going on. Currently, Dean has 116 juniors and seniors who qualified to take the Seal of Biliteracy. 38 students have already signed up. Next, this, oh, Ms. Wilson, if you could pass this down. This week, this week's counseling, I'm sorry, this week, counseling, teen clinic, and student government have teamed up for our Spirit Week. You can look at the flyer around. It is around healthy relationships. Next, for the second time, the Dean, the Dean Tech Barbecue and Car Show is back for May 4th. Mr. Vera is leading our student government and student ambassadors. This year, there will be food trucks, vendors, and activities for all to enjoy. If you'd like to support, please reach out to Michael Vera, at M Vera at HPS.Hoyokai.MA.us. I will send that in an email if you guys would all like it. Next, 8th grade tours, nope, I'm sorry. Yes, 9th grade is hosting the Palentine Dance on February 16th. Then 8th grade tours happened at Dean Campus. I, as one of the Dean ambassadors, leading the 8th grade around, 8th graders around, can say that this year, I think we're gonna have a very large influx of applications. There was a lot of students interested in coming to Dean this year. And on that topic, 8th grade interviews are this week, with interviews being done in Spanish as well. Next, ambassadors are selling roses and carnations with warm wishes for a fundraiser. And lastly, during February break, Dean will be, Dean will be hosting attendance buyback. Students will be buying back attendance during a variety of school projects, such as bulletin redesign, reorganizing Chromebook carts, and hanging international flags around the school.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Anybody have any questions for any of our student reps? Ms. Wilson?
I didn't get the number of students who've already applied for the biliteracy, for the application process.
That's okay. We do not, I don't have the number of students who have applied. I know that we have 116 juniors and seniors who qualify, and 38 students have signed up. And I might be able to get you them, okay.
Dr. Caballero?
Thank you so much for your presentation, and it's, it's so wonderful to see this, you know, reaching out to those colleges and universities, and to see your leadership with respect to younger students, you know, helping them find their educational path. I think it's one of the things that I really appreciate is the students' agency, you know, with your education, and how much that is needed as a role model for the rest of the youth, the youth in the entire city. So thank you so much. Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, great. So we'll just keep moving right along then. We're gonna go into vice chair reports. So on February 4th, we, the school committee had a retreat. The overarching goal of the retreat was to discuss us as a body, our, in our commitments and our whys. And so we went over, each member of the committee had an opportunity to go over a little bit about their why, and what drives them towards their service. We had a nice, healthy conversation, and some of the general takeaways was definitely representation. Students, we heard a lot about putting the students' needs first, giving everyone a chance to fulfill their obtainable goals. Pride in our students. We don't want people to feel like they're a statistic. Reading, arts, music, diversity in, within our system, and so forth. So we had a really healthy discussion around where we stand as a committee. We went over potentially adopting some procedural laws and, not laws, sorry, procedural procedures for the committee, which we can discuss. I don't know if that's something we should move to subcommittee, because we didn't actually get to the point of adopting anything. So I don't know if anybody wants on discussion to suggest maybe that we do a little bit more work around that in a subcommittee, or we can work on it in one of our regular meetings, if anybody has anything to add there. We all absolutely loved being at the Media Center at Hoyokai North. So we discussed the potential of this meeting being moved there. I know that the mayor and Mr. Soto were gonna discuss it a little further with Hoyokai Media and go over some logistics with that. Did you wanna add anything about that particular topic? No, Mr. Soto? I know we had...
No, I just, I personally think space, I know it feels bigger, but space would be a challenge to fit all of us on the stage. Mr. Hines said that we had held a meeting back in, back in the day at the Media Center, and that was the consensus, that it was like, it was just too tight. So the room itself looks bigger, but with the ramp and the railing and the stages, like, even the stage itself is not, you know, you're not easily accessible. So I, you know, I'm interested in continuing that conversation, but ultimately, you know, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't care if we have the meeting over there, or if we have the meeting here, but we can explore, like, looking at that space in more detail and seeing if it's a good fit.
Is it, I know at the retreat, that seemed like the general consensus for everyone, so if anybody wants to make a motion that we formally further explore that option and have the superintendent report back to us on the feasibility of moving the meeting, we could entertain a motion to do so. I thank you, Mr. Colomore. Anybody, so Mr. Colomore on the motion, and Dr. Caballero with the second? Any further discussion? The names? So the motion would be to have the superintendent look into logistics further with Hoyokai Media to potentially move the Hoyokai School Committee meeting location to the Media Center, the Media Room at Hoyokai North. So the motion was made by Mr. Colomore, seconded by Dr. Caballero, and Ms. LaFave has the floor under discussion.
What would be the point of, what would be the point of moving, oh, where the school committee meetings are? It's also a bust route. I'm not sure.
I'm reporting it out, 'cause it was discussed at the retreat, so if anybody has any further discussion, Ms., I know people thought the meeting, the space felt larger, it felt more accommodating. The location seemed like an easy location to get to. So again, I'm just reporting out on what was discussed.
I'd like it here.
All right, I have a, okay.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Um, I'd like it here, but whatever decides, we have to do it, but I love...
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wilson.
I believe the DEI Subcommittee is looking at different locations from trying to ensure that we have a greater number of people attending our meetings. So if we could make that, I'd like to amend the statement and actually have the superintendent look into possibility of other locations, and not just pinpoint it to Hoyokai High School. What I think of when I look here is I look at the disconnect of, you know, our audience off to the side, turning their heads to look at us, you know, from the seating perspective, is what I'd be looking at, as well as when we do have hot topics, making sure that we have a location where we have a good, where we can accommodate a good number of individuals coming to either speak publicly, on the record, or just watch our proceedings. So I would like to make the motion to expand that to looking into other spaces in general.
Okay, so on the amended motion, so Ms. Wilson is suggesting that we amend the original motion to include other potential locations that are feasible, are manageable, are accessible, that would potentially work for the meeting locations. So on that amendment, I will have a second, entertain a second. Mr. Willahan, so further discussion on the amendment to the motion. Ms. LaFave?
Okay, so I understand where we're talking about equity and trying to move it around. It's also about consistency and stability, right? And also, you gotta look at access with them being able to record, that that was one of the issues, so that's why it couldn't be done at Hoyokai Media either. When we had the big group, that we couldn't even do it in our own cafeteria. And again, and it's based on being able to ensure that we've got it broadcast live, so that those in the home. Now, if we're talking about equity and kind of bringing it around, and getting feedback and getting others, that's where the ward meetings were supposed to be for. It was so that you're doing those meetings within your wards, and other members could attend. You just couldn't discuss. So when you have a lot of us showing up at a school, you know, at a ward meeting, you separate, and you don't discuss. You're there to listen, take in the information. So for me, I will give you a heads up, I'm not gonna approve for, for it.
Thank you. So any further discussion? Okay, so we're gonna roll call, right? Well, we don't need to roll call, because we're not, there's nobody on Zoom. So we have a second on the amendment to the motion, so we're gonna vote on the amendment, and then vote on an overall motion. So we're voting right now to amend the motion to include looking into further the potential of moving the school committee meeting either to Hoyokai North Campus Media Room, or other potential feasible, accessible locations. So on that motion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so the amended motion, the motion is amended. So now we will vote on the amended motion as a body to continue to explore potentially moving the school committee meeting. Right? I'm doing that right, right?
I asked for a roll call vote, please?
Sure. We will do a roll call.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
No.
Mr. Romero? Ms. Tensley-Williams?
No.
Dr. Yadilet Rivera-Cologne? Dr. Caballero?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
The motion passes. So in continuing recap of our retreat, the other things we discussed are our potential schedule for 2024, which we will cover later in this meeting, the letter from the commissioner, which we will go over in detail next. And then we didn't really get a chance to discuss administration, job details for an admin position to the school committee. One other thing that we did discuss was Dean, the potential for the committee to look into giving Dean Technical High School back its formal identity as an independent high school. So at this time, I don't know that there needs to be any motions, I'm just mentioning it, 'cause we talked about it. If anybody would like to make a motion to formalize the process, by all means. Mr. Soto and I did have a follow-up call on our Thursday call. So he's gonna look into it with Desi and with the state to find out what exactly the process is, so we're knowledgeable, and then report back to us. So we're we're knowledgeable and then report back to us on what the process to reestablish Dean. In the eyes of the state as an independent high school would be. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
So I think based upon um not having the information it and with Mr. Soto going and looking into that in independently. I think we should wait until he has something to bring back to us.
Yep. Alright, so anything else? Anybody else want to add anything? Uh, discussion points on the retreat from last Sunday? No? Alright, Mr. Willahan?
Thank you. Um, can I just make a motion to go? Go out of order on the. And the. Have our budget presented now.
You, you're more than welcome to make the motion.
Our guest is here.
You're more than welcome to make that motion. Yes, of course. Uh, uh, so Mr. Willahan is making a motion that we take some agenda items out of order. And we go to the superintendent's report out on the fiscal year 2025 budget. Uh, Ronnie Collmore seconded the motion. So all those in favor? Or I'm sorry, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion passes unanimously. Um, okay, so we'll stop there and we will move on to superintendent. Uh, receiver reports and our fiscal 25 budget development.
Alright, thank you. Um, let me. Try this, um. I want to get this presentation up first. And. Uh, but first, I I I just, I think I can start with just some framing. Um. I I have Sean Mangano here. He's the Executive Director of Finance and I can't stress enough how lucky we are. To have um to have landed him in this position. He's been a breath of fresh air in the role and. Uh, is just doing a great job. Uh, um, he's gonna be, we're kind of co-presenting this. Um. So uh, he's gonna be. Um, um, doing a a little bit of the presentation. I will say that um. We, you know, this is a year, as everybody knows, where. We uh, we don't have Esser anymore. Esser is gonna be going away. Uh, which was a significant inv- uh investment in uh of federal dollars. We are in, I believe, year three of the Student Opportunity Act, so this upcoming year would be. Year four and then we have two more years of Student Opportunity Act increases before it tapers off. Um, and and we start to see normal increases. Um, the other thing that I want to name is that uh this is also. You know, this is not gonna, uh, the last three years, we've been in in really good shape. Come budget season and we've been able to add significant investments in coaching, in intervention, in enrichment. And um with the hopes, like we've had a strategy all along, like we are gonna use these federal dollars. So that like to allow the Student Opportunity Act to catch up. And hopefully, we'll be in a position where we can continue with a lot of the investments. That that we wanted to, you, we didn't want to wait till year six of the Student Opportunity Act. To add additional counselors and to add different things that we knew uh we wanted to use Student Opportunity Act money for. So we used Esser to kind of accelerate that. Um, and that that is now over. Uh, Student Opportunity Act isn't fully implemented, so. Uh, this upcoming budget season is gonna be. A a lot tighter than we've experienced in the past and we really need to think about how we're staffing our our buildings. Uh, we're looking at overall a $6 million deficit. But uh I, you know, I'm confident that we're gonna get there. Uh, through, you know, our staff allocation model and. Uh, and that $6 million deficit includes us just taking everything that was on Esser. Um, and just moving it to the general fund, but we're, you know, we know that. Realistically, that that that's not something we're gonna be able to do. We knew that the all three years. Um, so we have to work through the budget development process, which is a decentralized process. Uh, to make sure that we're closing that gap and balancing the budget. In a strategic way that allows us to still meet the needs of our students and families. So uh, I spoke a lot and I'm just gonna ask. Uh, Sean Mangano to uh walk us through the presentation.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you for taking me out of order. I appreciate it. You didn't have to do that, but. Long night after the Super Bowl and, you know, long days. Not happy about it though. Um, so yeah, I'll walk you through our revenue forecast, our expense projections and talk a little bit about the timeline and the budget process. Um, so we're gonna go to slide two, which is up there. Um, so this is our revenue forecast again, early uh early in the process. Um, but the revenue side is probably the side that's gonna change um have the the least amount of change throughout the process. Uh, so starting at the top. Uh, chapter 70 state aid and our required local contribution, those are the two pieces that make up our required net school spending. Um, so our required net school spending for FY25 that just came out in the governor's budget. Um, is 114.2 million. Um, with 101 million coming from chapter 70 and the balance coming from the local contribution. Um, the local contribution uh you can see is rising about 6%. The chapter 70 is going up about 4%. Um, the way this works is the state produces their target uh based on our enrollment and different categories of students. Um, and they're implementing the Student Opportunity Act, which provides different increments for the students that we have. Uh, we're in year four of that implementation where we're seeing sizable increases in our chapter 70. Um, so we've got two more years to look forward to after this year. So they produce the net school spending or the required net school spending um target. They look at what our local contribution was last year. Right now, our local contribution is below. Our target that the state says the uh Hoyok should be at. So they add an increment each year to our local contribution to move it up. Um, so the number you see, the 13.2 million is the local contribution with that added increment added on. Um, so we get to our required net school spending. There's an adjustment for some city administration costs that they provide on our behalf in their auditor's office. Um, and also the work that the DPW does to um provide services to our parks and our playgrounds. Um, and then they add in any charter tuition reimbursement that we're gonna get. So there's a projection of our uh tuition enrollment next year. And then the they apply the formula for reimbursement to get to uh 2.7 million roughly. That number will change. That's probably the number here that will change the most um as enrollment changes. So we get to a adjusted net school spending um uh budget or revenue source of 116.7 million. After that, these are the non-net school spending categories. I'll talk about these more when we get to the expense side because they're really just one. Uh, they're offsets for what's on the expense side of the budget. Um, so our total operating revenue projected for next year is 128.8 million, um, or about a 5.3%. Increase on the um revenue side. Any questions on revenue before I go to the next slide? Okay. Uh, so slide three, so this colorful chart, these are net school spending allocations for the last. Uh, 12 years or so going back to FY13. And then it includes a projection forward for the next three years. Um, two of those years, again, the Student Opportunity Act is still kicking in and those increments that they're giving us for additional chapter 78 and. Um, are still going into effect. And then that last year is what it looks like after it's fully phased in. So the total bar um is the total net school spending requirement. You'll see there's two different colors in each bar. Um, the bottom shade there is the local contribution. Um, the upper part is chapter 70. So for example, from FY13 to FY20 or so, the local contribution rose about two and a half million. Um, chapter 70 rose about 20 million over that time span. Um, so you can see where it's going. Uh, that gives us optimism for the future when we look out at how much funding we're gonna get from. Um, the state and from the city, but we know it also poses a challenge to the city to to meet that local contribution, which is a um a big challenge as part of the budget process. And this uh American dollar, I'm not sure this coin, where this coin came from, but. Um, this just breaks down roughly how much of our funding for net school spending. Uh, comes from local funds versus state funds. So about 11 and a half percent comes from the uh from local. And 88.5% comes from the state.
Yeah, and I think the the biggest thing we. We name here is like, you know, you'll probably hear that some communities are already done with their budget next year, for next year. Um, because they're not so dependent on state revenue. But we are like heavily dependent on state revenue. So we actually follow the the state budget process uh throughout the entire process. You'll see. You know, a a budget cal- a state budget calendar, that's something that Sean and I monitor closely every time the budget passes through the state. The different phases of the state budget process. Because unlike other communities, for example, like Long Meadow where where they're not relying on that, they can actually. Build their budget for next year and and, you know, the majority of it is through local. Through local dollars, so uh they're not waiting to see what's gonna happen at the state level to then develop their budget. We're in a much different position, uh, which this this really highlights here.
Is it okay to take some questions now?
Sure.
I saw some hands. Okay, Mr. Willahan?
Thank you.
I saw Jay first, sorry.
Real quick, yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just follow up on what Mr. Mr. Soto said, you know, we don't have the benefit of a. Long Meadow or a Wolverhampton to fund our school system as. At like economic uh. Challenges of our city. Um, basically, right now, the local funds were at 7.5%. That basically. Matches overall spending for the uh city's share.
I'm sorry, wh- what number are you referring to?
City share of the uh.
That went up 6%.
Yeah.
So about 5.9%.
Usually that's around the same, isn't it? Between 10 and 12%, isn't that really the average?
Okay, so this this allocation is about the same, yes.
It's about the same, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's been around 88 and 12.
Yep.
For as long as I've been here.
That's, yeah, that was my question, yes.
Yeah.
Since I've been around, that's been around the uh the average.
Yeah.
So basically, you know, what what I try to tell the the taxpayers that, you know, we're we're just, we just, the school system. Relies on the state, you know, uh, state revenue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's an important thing to name because when when everybody was advocating for Student Opportunity Act. That was something that other that municipalities were worried about too, like. If the budget, if the foundation budget's gonna go up, that means our local contribution is also gonna go up. So we need to, you know, plan on how we're gonna be able to fund that. So. Um, yes, there's a significant amount of, you know, you look at, we're getting an extra 4 million in chapter 70. Um, or an ac- an extra 4.7 million in in net school spending. But only 4 million of that is coming from the state and the rest would be coming from the local contribution.
Mayor Garcia?
What is the the local contribution? So in 24. What looks like 25, you're looking at 13.2.
Yes.
What's the increase?
Uh, 730,000.
730,000.
5.9%.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
So, Mr. Soto, you're saying the 128 million point eight is projected for 2025?
That is the general fund appropriation, which includes net school spending. Plus all the non-net school spending things that are in our budget like transportation.
Pardon me, I'm so sorry. Dr. Caballero?
I also had a question. So looking at the charts. Um, the possible increments or increases in um. You know, the government's contribution vis a vis what the city has to also uh contribute. I was wondering what. Changes or accommodations or budget cuts would have to be made in order for us to contribute to that. Uh, amount. I'm looking at fiscal year 25, 26, 27, 28. And I, how is the city going to face this budget challenge and what programs or services get cut? Or is it also an item that also affects tax taxpayers? Of course it is, but could you?
Yeah, I can't really speak to the city's budget process, but. Um, I can tell you that our our office works directly with the mayor and with the auditor. Um, every time the state releases their their cherry sheet, what is what they called, uh, you know, they they release. The cherry sheet, which has the charter assessments, the local aid to the community. And the state aid for chapter 70 and then all the assessments. We work with the city auditor's office. To uh to make sure that we're holding the right amounts in our budget. And the the amount that we hold in our budget process is just to meet the minimum net school spending requirement. And then we, you know, we we just work really closely with the city. On uh on making sure we're hitting our timeline for the budget development process, but you know, I know that, you know. I only know based on, you know, going through. With the mayor on like, how are we gonna fund the middle school building? Um, you know, what the revenue projections are. I know that he has had some consultants work. With uh some some of his folks to to do a uh uh. Multi-year projection on what revenue and expenses look like. Uh, but I can't, no, I can't really speak to that, other than that.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Thanks.
Mr. Kennedy, uh, Superintendent Soto, do, am I, am I understanding this correct, that the budget hasn't been like. Of like finalized, like you're still working on trying to?
Oh, absolutely. We're gonna go through the the budget process timeline in a minute. Right now, we just got the governor's revenue projection. And we go through a process where the department heads build their budget and we go through a pro- a process where. The principals build their budget for next year.
Okay.
Um, it's a very decentralized process, so it's not like Sean's sitting behind a door and coming up with numbers. We actually include principles like, here's your staff allocation based on enrollment. Here's the amount of money you have for discretionary expenses and developing your spending plan. And we sit with each department head and with each principal to develop that budget for the upcoming school year.
Okay, um, something that I'd like to shine, like put a spotlight on is around transportation. Dean has been without an after-school bus. For quite some time and it's been quite difficult for students who A are in a club or B need to stay after for extra support. Um, so I'd just like to kind of bring your attention to that and maybe consider that. I know that transportation. In the last year has been uh very widely debated in this room. Um, but that's something that we've been really struggling with and I hope that that is considered when making the final budget decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. You can continue.
Thank you. So we're gonna shift to expenses. Um, so we'll start at the top again. Um, do you want to send the the chart? Slide uh five?
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So salaries, uh, we're projecting going up 6.7 million or 10.7%. That's the largest item. Um, and there's three drivers there that. Two of them are a little bit unique, um, and one of them is just sort of a a timing issue. Um, so the main one is Esser going away is um, Mr. Soto described. We had several or dozens of positions that were funded through Esser. Um, that right now, this is a level services projection, so we're projecting all those positions without that funding, but in the general fund now. Um, so that's the biggest item. Um, the the next item is we have a placeholder for un- uh for union contracts, contractual increases for staff. Um, and then we have estimates for contracts that aren't settled, so all those are baked into this number already. And then lastly, the FY24 number already included an estimate for staff turnover savings or or lap salaries. Basically, when a position is vacant or somebody leaves and somebody comes in if they make less money. Um, we had a uh estimate in FY24 for that, that reduced the salary number. We don't have an estimate in FY25 yet. We will at some point throughout the budget process. Um, but we we haven't plugged that in yet, so that differential is also resulting in a bigger increase. Um, so right now, it's it's a large number. Um, but as we go through the process, that'll that'll come down.
Yeah, and I just wanna, I want to highlight that we also have, you know, about 70 vacancies, right? So um, that's been part of the regular staffing updates. So part of, part of the process is like, okay. Like, we can't fund as many positions as we as we wanted to, given our inclusion efforts, right? We wanted to have a special ed and an ELL teacher on every grade level team, but like, it's not feasible in this staffing market. To be able to say like, yes, that's that's the way we're gonna do inclusion. Part of this budget year is gonna be like, okay, how do we get at more inclusive practices? Without having all these extra positions that that we had budgeted but couldn't fill, so. We'll see that number go down and shrink that $6 million deficit. Through, you know, elimination of some vacant positions that we, you know, we we were really ambitious in trying to uh hire this year. Uh, but unfortunately, in this staffing market, it's just not, it's not realistic and we're not the only district. There's. Uh, but unfortunately, in this staffing market, it's just not, it's not realistic. And we're not the only district. There's uh every district superintendent that I've talked to. Has a lot of s- uh more vacancies than 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 ever before, given this staffing market.
Uh, supplies and services, again, larger increase than typical, same reason. Um, there were some things funded on Esser that we've put into the general fund. Um, there's more discussions that we'll have as we go through the cabinet. Process and then building their budgets, review and everything that's been funded with Esser in the past few years and deciding what needs to stay. Um, and which of those things can go. Um, so that brings our total discretionary expenses um up about ten percent in this projection. Uh, the next two items, health and life insurance and retirement, non-teachers, those are basically assessments uh to the city. The first one for health insurance. Um, the city is still discussing whether they're gonna be self-funded for next year or we're gonna stay in this sort of hybrid, fully funded. Um, reimbursement model. Um, but this estimate came from the treasurer to use about a ten percent increase, uh and we'll refine that as we go further. And then uh retirement, non-teachers, that's the assessment to the Holyoke um retirement system for non-MTRS employees. Um, that number, we don't, we should get an exact assessment figure in the next week or so. Um, that'll allow us to to pinpoint that number and we're and we're confident it's gonna come in a little bit lower than where it is now. Um, but we've left it alone until we get the exact number. Uh, retired teachers' health assessment, that is, that's a governor's budget cherry sheet figure. That's the assessment for um retired teachers being part of the GIC. Um, and then the next three are also cherry sheet figures for charter tuition, school choice and our special ed assessment. Um, one item to note is for charter tuition, the the state doesn't always do this. They just kind of put one big number for charter tuition. But because we're right at net school spending, we have to break out the charter transportation component of that. Um, because we can't count that towards net school spending like we can the tuition. Um, so for our purposes. This charter tuition line is just the actual tuition. The transportation is down below. Um, other benefits, unemployment utilities, we've level funded uh for now. As we go through the budget process, we'll we'll drill into those figures a little bit more. Um, and then out of district tuition, uh projecting a large increase again because there was a significant portion that was on Esser. Um, and those funds are going away. Uh, the bottom four, those are non-net school spending um expense items. So the first two are transportation. Uh, the the first one is in-district transportation or district-run transportation. The second one is the charter component. Um, so for district transportation, um we knew there was gonna be about a five percent increase just in rates going up if all level. Of all service levels stayed about the same. Um, but we've also seen this year through December um increases in runs as well. Um, so this projection for transportation is based on December invoices and December uh run levels. We do have pupil services in the transportation department right now, working together, um going through everything they can to see how we might be able to. Consolidate, find efficiencies for next year or even this year potentially. Um, to get this number down because we know this is one of those numbers that the city um is gonna look at very closely and. Um, will be a challenge. Uh, the charter tuition transportation.
Can I just expand on that a little bit like? You know, when as uh this was a year where we had a new contract. Implementation, so we saw a pretty significant increase last year. And then there'll be, you know, the rates. Uh, will be anywhere from three and a half and five percent depending on the vendor. Um, but, you know, we did see an increase in the number of runs. That we were running particularly in our out-of-district schools. And in it, you know, I asked Sean to work with the sped department to figure out like, why? Why, why is there an increase in runs? We didn't have a significant increase in the number of students. Um, that that uh so, in in doing so, like, there's. You know, there's uh, I'll give you an example of one school where we have um at uh, I think it's Springdale. We have eleven eleven students going there. And for whatever reason, there's seven vans going for those eleven students. So. Like, we need to put a stop to that immediately. And uh part of what happens with that is. Either through the vendor or through the sped department or through a court order or through the out-of-district school. They will say like, hey, Anthony and Sean, they can't, they go to the same school, but they can't be on the same van. Because there's a restraining order or because there's an issue be- uh there's a conflict between the two. So um what has been happening is we've been trying to accommodate those requests. And in doing so, like, that's that's just, you know, we have to go take a look at those scenarios and. Unfortunately, there's gonna be some pushback, right? Like, we have to tell, you know, families that might want own their kid. You know, they don't want their kid on a van because of sensory issues or because of other issues or because there's a conflict with another student. Um, we do have monitors on these vans, so like, it, those are gonna be some really difficult conversations, but we can't have seven vans. For eleven kids, like, that just doesn't, uh it's it's not a responsible thing to do with taxpayers' dollars. And we have to figure out a way to to make sure that we're providing transportation for our students. And that that it's it's a safe means of transportation, uh but that we have like uh some controls in place. To make sure we're we're being uh practical and reasonable with with the, you know, what the school is telling us need to happen. Or what the company is telling us need to happen because their drivers are reporting like. Hey, there was this going on with these two students. We gotta separate them. We gotta, we gotta just make sure we're doing the right thing. So that I'm I'm looking forward and, you know, I'm glad we're we're working on. Fixing those issues this year. I am looking for support, right? There's gonna be some families that call and say, hey, my kid. Is now on a van with with six other kids. That's that's a problem, you know, there's gonna be issues. And like, unfortunately, I mean, we can, we have ten passenger vans, right? We can fit six or seven kids on there. And there's a monitor. We have to, we have to make sure we're just uh being responsible there. So. Um, we're digging into it and, you know, I I hope to see this number go down. And we're gonna continue to to uh to work on those projections and build a budget for next year. Based on what what we believe we need. I'll also name that not included in here is significant reimbursements that the city gets. For transportation. So McKinney-Vento right now is probably over a million dollars. The city gets. One hundred percent reimbursement this year for um for McKinney-Vento transportation. So we, you know, once the year closes out, we do our end-of-year report, we submit it to the state. And then the city gets a check for whatever we spent on McKinney-Vento transportation. It hasn't always been a hundred percent. And I'm not gonna sit here and say it's always going to be a hundred percent, but this year, it's a hundred percent. Um, and I think they were talking about ninety-three percent um for for next year. So there's that and then there's also, we're also allowed to claim for out-of-district tuition. We're allowed to claim circuit breaker reimbursement. Which hasn't always been the pa- the the case. I think that the state and federal government is seeing that like. Special education costs in general is is uh, you know, i- is putting a burden on a lot of communities. And I know that they're putting a task force together at the state level to to try to figure out like. You know, just like they did with the Student Opportunity Act, like, what are we gonna do around special education costs? Um, specifically, one of the things they've already done is said, okay, like, you can include. Out-of-district transportation in your circuit breaker reimbursements.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Um, Mr. Soto, uh is there a lot of bullying going on? Because with the buses, you know, my kid is on this bus and somebody. That one, we gotta spill them up.
I don't, I mean, I don't know that there's like, define a lot, like, I don't, there's there's instances. And our expectation is that the bus is an extension of the classroom. So if there is an incident on a bus, our expectation is that that's reported to the school and that the school is following up. Um, you know, hey, Anthony and Sean got into, you know, Sean was actually throwing snowballs at the bus. Okay, well, let's pull the video, let's take a look. The principals do that and they pull Sean aside. And they call Sean's parent in and they say, hey, you know, I know that this didn't happen in the school, but this happened on the bus. And here's how, how are we gonna handle this situation?
Thank you, sir.
As a district, I think it's important that we look into alternative pathways, like. More alternative pathways, right? Like. Eight million dollars in out-of-district placement. Um, that's not school choice, right? That is like, we can't educate your kid, so we need to send him somewhere else for services.
Yeah, that's, majority of it, I would think is therapeutic. Schools intervention, but like, the classic example I use is um Willie Ross School for the Deaf. Or Willie Ross School for the Blind, like, we unfortunately, in Holyoke Public Schools. Don't have a program to meet those students' needs and Willie Ross does. So, under under the federal law, like, that student is entitled to an education. So we have to send them to Willie Ross. You know, obviously, the parent is involved in that process. And we pay the tuition of Willie Ross, which is a, you know, a a significant. Um, you know, tuition costs.
Well, I appreciate that particular example. I don't think there's that many students that we send to.
That was just an example.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just saying, but like, we can't meet the need of probably student population for those specific needs, but there's gotta be. Some overarching. Way that as a district, we could be providing, like, kind of how we have Opportunity Academy, right? Or, you know, I know we've talked in the past about having an alternative high school. Um, or, you know, something else that could possibly be done on a. More cost-effective budget? I don't know. I mean, we a- as you said, we know the services are going up. Hopefully, the state task for, I see your hands. So hopefully, the ta- the state task force can figure out a way to help. Districts better f- fund these things, but, you know, if our average per pupil expenditure is what, fourteen thousand dollars per student now? And then we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars to send a student out of district. Why isn't the state giving us back that money? I don't me- I don't mean that like literally, I'm not like literally asking you guys, because I know you probably can't answer that question. But that's, that's something that hopefully can be looked into. I know, like, these are things that were factored in with the Student Opportunity Act and. Why districts like Holyoke need more funding, but like. Eight million dollars, like, an increase of over two million dollars in out-of-district tuition is is significant. Um, I saw Ms. LaFave's hand next and then Ms. Wilson.
Ms. Wilson, she actually went first. She was quick.
Okay, Ms. Wilson and then Ms. LaFave.
So I just have to say, um, you know, having the experience of working in this district, um I do have to say that special education. Um. Does a very good job keeping students in district, which they can support. Um. I believe that the students who are out of district are out of district for a particular reason. Because we cannot meet their needs and and it, they're diverse in their needs. Um, and I would. Basically say that if we're we're having difficulty finding staff for our regular classrooms. You know, you're looking for someone with significant, um, you know, training. Um, and expertise in these areas that. You know, kind of warranted. I also think that it's from my understanding that the state allowed. Um, schools to increase their their funding this year, right, for out-of-district schools. The state allowed them to increase it by.
Fourteen percent.
Like I was gonna say, some significant number I recall hearing about, and that's a large increase. Um, a fourteen percent increase on an annual basis that the state allowed that we are absorbing now as a city.
Ms. Fave?
Yeah, so like, um, Ms. Wilson had mentioned, obviously, we couldn't meet their needs here. It within the district, that if you look back at what happened with the Center for Excellence. Um, back when uh we weren't in receivership. Um, and Lawrence, they were looking at converting it into this call. So Center for Excellence, which. It was never even classified as a. As an out-of-district placement type of day school. Um, it was considered an student's IEPs as separate classroom, but yet they were from another school. Um, one of the things that we had asked is if they could please. Um, apply for building a therapeutic intervention program. And at that time, I was told. The hundred pages to apply for it and then it would be a lot of money and investment in it. But if you look at it, we could have serviced. Our very own students, plus we could have opened it to others, right? Versus having a school that obviously we had to immediately close down. Now, in regards to the students now that we do have an out-of-district placement, actually, they're excelling. So to to remove them or to look at it as a cost basis, we have to be looking at it as it was an investment where at least these students. Are gonna be graduating and they still are part of the Holyoke Public Schools. Yes, we are paying more. But at least they are excelling in the program because they have the services that the child needs. And am I being biased about it? Yes, because one of them is my student, my my child, and he gets to graduate this year. So that'll be minus a payment.
John, if you have anything else, you can keep.
Okay.
Continue.
Um, so yeah, so that's in-district transportation. I think that's where we left off. Um, charter tuition, transportation, we don't have control over. That number is given to us by the state as part of the assessment. Um, and then we've left crossing guards and leases alone. We do have a lease expiring in, I think, November. So that number may shift a little bit when we look at, um, when we get a little closer and we, if we get a number. I don't think it'll increase dramatically, but um.
I just stopped you there. Who reviews that lease? And how many years are they projecting that we commit to moving forward?
Yeah, right now, we have a month-to-month lease with the central office.
Okay.
And then the other lease that we have is for the transitions program. And uh we entered into a three-year lease, which is up at the end of.
November, I think.
November, so we're gonna have to go through the process again of of renewing that lease. Um, or, you know, there there has been conversation about. Moving both central office and moving the transitions program into another space, but. That's definitely gonna take some time to to make happen. But that would eliminate this entire line item right here. And move it up towards supplies and services, whatever operating expenses are uh associated with. With that new space. I think you went through all this, right?
Yeah, you can go to the next slide. Um, this is just a recap of everything we just discussed. You can go to the next one. So this one, I'll just point out, this drills into transportation a little bit more. Um, again, twelve point eight percent increase. Um, as Mr. Soto just mentioned, we get reimbursement for, um, the city gets reimbursement for some of these transportation costs. Um, but obviously, not all of them. Um, and then this pie chart breaks it down by special education versus regular education. Uh, McKinney-Vento, McKinney-Vento and foster transportation and then others, the sort of internal administrative side of transportation. Uh, but you can see the about two-thirds of our transportation costs are related to special education. Uh, next slide, so as um. Uh, Mr. Soto said, we're closely tied to the state budget process. We're right at the very beginning, um, with the governor's budget. House and Senate will be working on this and release their own versions in the coming months. Um, and when they do, we'll update our projections with those numbers. Um, again, I don't anticipate anything for us to change dramatically because most of our number is tied to the net school spending requirement. Um, and they've already put in the the phase in that they've been talking about for years, so um, so I don't anticipate huge changes. Um, and we talked about the timing of the budget. I think actually, just in November, there was one final. Adjustment to the FY twenty-four budget to bring it up to in alignment with the state's budget. Um, so yeah, it it is a long process. Next slide. Um, so our internal timeline, uh we're gonna keep refining these numbers over the next few months. Chiefs are working on their spending plans as we speak. Um, and they will be developing, um, we've asked them to come up with some possible reductions. That can help us um work through that gap that we discussed. Um, and they will be meeting with uh the superintendent in in March to go through their spending plans. Uh, school budgets, they are a little bit later. They start in March and April. They'll go through a similar process uh where they will develop their budgets. Um, and we'll be looking again at staff allocations, especially given all the vacancies that we've had. Um, it doesn't make sense to tie up money in positions we can't fill. Um, so that'll be a a big part of this year's budget process. Um, and then May and June, we'll uh finalize the budget proposal, hold a public hearing and work with the city council to review and vote on the budget. So key takeaways, again, we have a preliminary budget gap of about six million dollars. Um, we're not alone. If you've read the newspaper, there's lots of school districts that are struggling with this transition. Um, away from Esser Fund, so FY twenty-five in terms of the budget, it is sort of this transition year off of this um federal funding. Um, we'll continue working through the budget process to identify efficiencies like we talked about for transportation, but also in other areas as well. Um, and we'll also evaluate re- different revenue sources that might be able to provide a temporary um sort of bridge to what we know is higher chapter seventy funding. Um, it doesn't make sense to dramatically change a program if we know we wanna keep it and we'll have funding the following year to to fund it, so. Um, we'll work through that. Um, we wanna maintain all the positive momentum that's been built over the last couple of years with Esser Funds on our strategic initiatives. Um, but also make sure our budget is structurally sound and that we can, it's in a sustainable fashion going forward. Um, overall, the outlook is. Um, overall, the outlook is still positive in light of the, our projection of chapter seventy funding coming to the district. Um, and the last key point here is we know we have to work collaboratively, uh, with our, our city partners, um, because they are responsible and bear a huge portion of the, of the school budget. Um, and so we wanna work closely with them to get this budget passed.
Ms. Wilson?
So, um, just on a side note, um, I am par- I am the chair of the, uh, Special Education Committee for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And one of my topics, um, I'm gonna be putting out, um, for the entire state for us, school committee members, is special education transportation. Uh, I don't think we're alone in the fact that it is a large expense, and I would like to learn from other, uh, districts, how they're managing it and how they're working, um, through that expense. So I just wanted to let everyone know here that that's on, um, one of my plans for the special education, uh, statewide meeting.
Mr. Willihan?
Thank you, Sean, for the presentation. Um, I know we have a budget, um, subcommittee meeting scheduled for March eighth, I believe, so we can talk about it more then. Um, I know there was an order filed with, with the, from the Hoyok City Council. Um, they want a list of, of the funding that was to schools spent for the, uh, SR funding. So I thi- I think they want like a detailed list broken down. That has been referred to the joint committee, schools and city, so that'll be, uh, upcoming, upcoming topic. Um, I was gonna ask for that list myself, so that's what it takes it off my plate. Thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that this doesn't, um, checking again to make sure what I'm gonna say is accurate, but where would like, um, building improvements fall under?
So it depends on the size of the budget improvement that you're talking about, so if it's
Not state money, like in district spending, like I don't, uh, is there anything?
Be in supplies and services.
Supplies and services. Okay, um.
That's what, that houses the facilities, like any non-payroll related, any payroll related items like custodians and facilities would be in salaries. And then any non-payroll related items would be in supplies and services. With the exception of our utilities, which you can see down below is two point six million dollars.
So I guess maybe then at your subcommittee meeting, if somebody else wants to make a motion, cause I can't, I'd like to have a breakdown of what we're doing on buildings. Um, I know I mentioned months ago, the exterior stairs at the high school need to be fixed. So we do, are we, do we have any facility improvements happening? Um, so I'd like a breakdown of that. I'd also like to, like to see a breakdown of like grant funds. You know, I don't see anything in here that talks about like grant funding that we could be going after to pay for certain things or, um, you know, is there grant funding that's paying for certain things now? Um, and then like out of district services that we're bringing in, for example, like right now we're paying Sanito Music School to teach our kids music. Um, so I'd like to see breakdowns of those kinds of things.
That would be in supplies and services as well, so.
I would like to see, excuse me. I'd like to see breakdowns of that, so I don't know if it's appropriate to see it at the subcommittee meeting or if we, I mean, to me, that's where the, the budget work should go, so, um, or if you guys wanna bring it back to us at a full committee meeting. But, um, I'd like to see breakdowns of that. Okay, anybody else have anything else to add about the budget? No? Mr. Collmore?
Are we gonna have a chance to sit down with department heads?
We don't, I mean, we don't have the school committee meet with department heads like the city council does, and that's, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, I think that that, that would probably fall under, you know, the, you guys are talking about doing the governance portion of the school committee policies, like included in that, and Ellie has some, um, this policy subcommittee has some, some, some financial policies, like currently, i- it's not a, a, a part of any school committee policy that you're doing department head hearings or anything like that. What is in the policy, it talks about like the school committee and the superintendent agreeing to what level of cost center they want to review and we, the, the ones that we have, uh, kept it at was, uh, basically that when I present in, in July, it's a budget by, by chief, and then we break down elementary, middle and high. And you guys also get all the schools budgets at the back of the big budget document. Um, so I think that that's really good discussion to have, like, as you're working through those ordinance and, um, and governance section of the, the, the school committee policies, and as you're working through the finance policies, like what level should the school committee be involved in? Uh, moving forward, uh, uh, when, you know, we transition back to local control. But right now, we don't have any plans to, you know, to do budget hearings. Um, essentially, like our team does that work with each department head and then prevent, present a summary to all of you, and then when you ask for questions like more details or anything like that, we can provide those as well.
Trouble on the bus.
Can you speak into the mic, Mr. Collmore?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, thank you.
Trouble on the buses, special education facility. Who ma- who makes the decision on whether we should add or delete aids on the buses?
Who makes that decision? I don't, so historically, monitors are, are required on a bus. If it's in the student's IEP, that a monitor be present. I would say that if we have a bus with twenty students that, um, that are on IEPs, uh, chances of one of them not having it in their IEP is very s- like, it's, it's slim, so like, the general rule of thumb is that bus monitors are on our small buses, which transport, uh, students that have transportation in their IEP. And, uh, uh, in addition to that, on vans that have students that have basically a monitor specified in their IEP. Um, if, so any s- like the big buses don't have any monitors on them, because there's no students that required in their IEP, otherwise they would be i- on a van or, or on a minibus. Um, that has been the general rule of thumb that, that has been in place since, since I've been here in Holyoke and probably since even before then. I don't know, I, I, you know, I can't speak to prior to twenty, twenty sixteen.
All right, thank you so much. Seeing no further discussion, thank you, Sean, and thank you, Mr. Soto, for the budget update. Uh, jumping back into vice chair reports, uh,
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, take the policy subcommittee, looking, um, at the second pass for the policies out of order.
Anybody wanna second the motion?
Where are we? Hold on, let me go back.
Section six B, I, policy second reading and review.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to take these as a package.
Hold on, we have a motion that we need to vote on. All those in favor for it's going out of order, uh, for the agenda and taking up the second readings of the policies. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would be me. Uh, motion carries. Ms. Ellie, you can discuss the second readings if you'd like.
Sure, um, uh, there was no changes, um, from the first readings, uh, based upon our procedure. Uh, they were posted, there were no comments that I'm aware of, and so this is a reading, uh, to move forward, to send them to our receiver superintendent in order to make the final approval and then update our, uh, policies. And then, and so our website, location for our policies.
A motion to refer back to the superintendent slash receiver to approve the recommendations and make changes to the policies?
No, the receiver has already reviewed these. He's, so we are, we are, he's accepting the policies as we have written them and that are included. So this would be a final approval for the changes, cause it's a second reading after the public has had opportunity for input.
I need a motion.
So the motion is to, um, well, we can't approve, so refer back to the
No, this is for us to approve the forwarding of it to the superintendent.
Okay.
Sorry, my clarification on language.
You can go ahead and make the motion. I'll second.
All right, okay. Everybody, please, can someone make the motion and be careful how you word it, so we can get it down on record?
So cor- I would like to make a motion to take the second readings as a group package and approve these for review with the state by our receiver superintendent.
Motion to amend to include, include them individ- in the sense individually, so repeating that it's C-H-C-A-C-A, A-C-A-B, C-H-D-A-D-B, D-B-C, D-B-D, D-B-F, D-E-C. That's the motion I'm amending.
I need a second on the amended motion, Ms. Tensley Williams. So all those, any discussion? See, Mr. Willihan?
Thank you, um, I just forgot how long do these have to be posted, um, for the public?
Go ahead.
Two weeks, and they were.
Okay. Okay, so on the amended motion, I'll do a roll call. This is just amending the motion, not approving the motion. I mean, sorry, we'll just, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The, the motion is amended. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will take a vote on the motion, which is to approve, take these up as a package to bring forth to the superintendent, uh, to present to the state for approval, but ensuring that they're worded out individually when brought forth. Accurate? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving back to the agenda and vice chair reports. As we all know, on February second, two thousand twenty-four, the commissioner sent a, out a communication to the mayor, the receiver and the school committee. I have printed copies of it if anybody needs to review. The super, or the commissioner then sent an amended version of the letter, which, um, myself and the mayor and, uh, Mr. Soto, we don't find any differences in the English version. We believe that it was just to clean up the Spanish version. Um, but I can't comment, cause I, I, I unfortunately don't read in Spanish. Uh, but there's two versions of the letter that have been circulated. Um, I'm going to read the version that we originally received in English. If anybody wishes for the record to follow me and read it in Spanish, I would be grateful. Um, okay, so on February second, two thousand twenty-four, the, the communication from the commissioner reads as follows, Dear Mayor Garcia, I'm writing a response to your letter petitioning the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to terminate the receivership of Hoyok Public Schools pursuant to six oh three C-M-R two point oh six parentheses fourteen. Consistent with the reguliz- regulation, Receiver Anthony Soto submitted written arguments and supporting documents in a letter dated December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I commend Receiver Soto for his thoughtful response to the Hoyok School Committee's petition, which both celebrates the progress that HBS has made under receivership and clearly identifies remaining areas for systemic improvement. Collaboration between the school committee and Receiver Soto is essential to sustaining the improvements made by the district. In reviewing both your and Receiver Soto submissions, it is clear that HBS has made progress under receivership. Of course, challenges remain, as Receiver Soto identifies in his letter. Continuing concerted investments in the district's teaching and learning systems and continuing prioritization of student attendance will be key to sustaining this progress. As we discussed last fall, state receivership is a temporary status with a return to local control as the ultimate goal. In light of the progress to date, the department would like to further confer with the receiver and the school committee about how to sustain and build upon the district's progress as we make plans for returning the district to local control. To allow for those conversations to proceed, at this time, I am deferring a formal determination on your petition. Thank you for your work on behalf of Hoyok students, and I look forward to our continued collaboration. Sincerely, Jeff Riley. Um, would one of our eloquent Spanish speaking members like to read the Spanish version for me?
I just have, wouldn't it be translated by our interpreters?
All right, that's fine. This seems, okay, that's fine. Um, okay, so that's the letter we received. I do. Anybody have anything they wanna say? Uh, open it for discussion. Ms. Wilson?
So as I, I've said this many times, I'm, I'm, you know, profoundly saddened by his decision to defer. Um, I'm a Libra, so I see things both ways. Um, you know, I'm glad he didn't say, no, uh, you can't get the schools back. Um, but I was, you know, extremely disappointed, um, by not having any steps in place or any timelines, uh, you know, nothing to really pinpoint, um, in the letter. Um, secondly, I, I would just like to comment that, um, I've heard from a couple of my constituents, um, you know, that they were upset in some way that, uh, you know, our receiver superintendent noted areas of concern, um, in his, uh, letter, you know, to the commissioner. Um, I think it would be foolhardy for us not to state that there are areas of concern. Uh, we as a school committee know there are. Uh, we have made improvements. There are continuing improvements. But to be, I guess, I can't even think of the right word, but to not like, admit that we know there is still work to be done is, is foolhardy, I guess would be my statement. So I just wanted to address the people who had shared with me about Mr. Stodo- Soto's, uh, letter. Thank you.
Mr. Collmore?
Pertaining to the letter, uh, has anything come out of the commissioner's committee or whatever his staff down there of what our problems are and how are they gonna do to help us out to correct this problem?
I believe I'm correct in stating that the only, uh, communication myself or the mayor has received from the commissioner's office since the letter was communicated was the updated letters that were sent to us on Tuesday. I, I think there's been some communication between the receiver, but I can't comment. Um, I'm not sure which one had their hands up. I saw you at the same time, so I'm gonna go with Ms. Tensley Williams first.
Um, I think Mr. Soto did say somewhere in that letter that he was not saying that we were perfect. I think I read it that he knew there was some situations that needed to be corrected, that when I read it, that's what I kinda picked. I don't think he said that we didn't need any, um, help with anything. That's what I read, but is that correct, Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I na- I named in, in my recommendation that we do begin a transition and that we just make sure it's a thoughtful process. And I named like some obvious issues that continue to persist, um, that I think that we could, we need to continue to focus on, so like, um, but ultimately, like, i- it was real clear in my recommendation that I do recommend a, a, a transition. I just, I just named that it should be a thoughtful one, right? Like, um, you know, that
Thank you, that's what I got from it.
Dr. Caballero?
Thank you so much. Uh, it's interesting how, um, I don't know, the approach that is so narrow uh, that in my opinion needs to be, you know, broader. I don't know, the approach that is so narrow that in my opinion needs to be, you know, broader. At our last meeting, we talked about social determinants and I go back to it. It's not enough to talk about, well, uh, we need improvement. No, we need to call them out. We need, this is a multi-dimensional problem, and I hope that this person in uh wherever he is in Boston will comes out here, takes a look at our city, and it's interesting how the demographics, you know, keeps repeating. We, the the cities that are so underfunded, like, you know, we keep being blamed for our problems when these are systemic problems. And chronic absenteeism does not affect Hoyoke only. This is a state problem. And we talk about health, you know, mental health issues. We talk about housing. We talk about lack of transportation, infrastructure, uh, depression, uh, COVID. And we are not putting all that, you know, all that together to really focus the attention on the lack of investment of the government in these cities, you know? And until we don't say things like this, this is where we need your support. These are our issues, and this is why your students are underperforming. In fact, we are failing. The government is failing our students and our families. And this is not a problem of, you know, Hoyoke. This is a problem of gov-, you know, government. And this is an issue that has more than education. It has to become more political for us to really face this situation. This is, you know, it's a crisis. We need to call it out, and we need to go out there, and we need to rally, and please count me in if you need support because it's it's been too many years and we are not saying the right words. We are not calling, you know, the problems out. I think that the letter could say whatever, but I think that we as a committee have the right to really send the letter with so many words, you know, and issues. Please come out here so that we inspire some respect. Because so far, as far as we don't speak the language that they really understand, that really, you know, shell-shocked them, nothing's gonna happen. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, um, I have I have prepared a statement on this. Um, and in the statement, it mostly reflects my feelings on receivership and the decision. Um, so the decision that was brought down by the by the state, in my opinion, was nothing less than an abysmal neglect of the well-being of students and staff in Hoyoke Public Schools. Under receivership, many students and teachers are miserable. Our well-being is pushed aside so we can perform for the state. We don't do much for our own benefit. We simply make our leadership look competent. Some students, my mic is on, some students don't even want to be in their schools. Some students don't want to be in their classrooms, and a lot of students aren't learning in their classrooms. Our student population is drained. We are drained, and our district is failing at its most simple duty, which is to form productive members of the society. Um, the two things that receivership is helping its students with is A, passing a standardized test barely for the benefit of the district and navigating absurd bureaucratic system that is designed to hold students back. We are not learning in our classrooms. We are instead being left with mental decay and a hatred of day-to-day life. Teachers, the most important yet disregarded in this district, are treated to a degree that is quite frankly shameful. Under receivership, our teachers are controlled in every aspect of their work. One reason, not the main reason, one reason for teacher retention is that the teachers are being controlled in every aspect. They have brought in people to tell them how to do their jobs, people who have never done their jobs, people who don't know how our schools, how our teachers, how our staff, or how our families or students operate. And if the teachers don't follow the expectations handed down by those experts, they face repercussions and backlash. Then we are paying certain teachers, paraprofessionals I'm referring to, worse than most fast food workers, even though they're doing the equivalent work of teachers, and telling them to work harder after all that. And even the staff that is getting paid twice as much as the paraprofessionals, I'm referring to full-time teachers now, are still having a hard time affording basic human needs. So teachers are gonna continue to leave this district. They can go to another district. They can go to their second or third jobs that a lot of teachers have. But they're probably better off than standing here under receivership where not much is going to change. Receivership, if it continues for much longer, is going to be the death of anything good in this district. Your chronic absenteeism, again, not saying it's the only reason, is going to continue to go up. Your teacher retention is going to get worse. And any and I do not blame any teacher, staff, or administrator who has been wanting to leave this district to do it now. Maybe that's the message that needs to be sent to the state to make a change. Finally, if we are not at the position that the state wants us to be at to exit receivership now, maybe the standards are too high and too unreasonable. Not to mention, we don't know what the standards are. We don't know what the state wants us to be. We don't know where the state wants us to be. Those have not been made clear. In my eyes, this letter was essentially when you say something you're parent and they say, no, because I said so. We don't have a reason. The state clearly has no clear vision for what they want our district to look like. Who does have a clear vision? The elected representatives at this table. The people who elected these representatives at this table have a clear vision of what they want this district to look like. Keeping us in this situation, in my opinion, is irresponsible and selfish of those capable of changing it. This group of elected individuals is more than capable of leading this district, and I can guarantee the lives of students and staff will be infinitely better under their leadership. Again, I want to preface this. I'm not saying that teacher retention and chronic absenteeism is caused by receivership. I'm saying that it would, in my opinion, it would infinitely improve with the district being withdrawn. That was my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Anyone else? I would love that. I would happily allow you to read the letter in Spanish. Thank you so much.
Estimado Alcalde Garcia, le escribo en respuesta a su carta solicitando al Departamento de Educación Primaria y Secundaria de Massachusetts que ponga fin a la rectoría de Hoyoke Public Schools de conformidad con 113 C M R 2.0614. De acuerdo con la regulación, el receptor Anthony Soto presentó argumentos escritos y documentación de respaldo en una carta fechada el 21 de diciembre de 2023. Elogio al receptor Soto por su atenta respuesta a la petición del Comité Escolar de Hoyoke que celebra el progreso de Hoyoke Public Schools que las escuelas han logrado bajo la rectoría e identifica claramente las áreas restantes para una mejor sistema, para una mejora sistemática. La colaboración entre el comité escolar y receptor Soto es fundamental para mantener las mejoras realizadas por el distrito. Al revisar tanto sus presentaciones como las de receptor Soto, queda claro que las escuelas públicas de Hoyoke han avanzado bajo la administración temporal. Por supuesto, sigue habiendo desafíos como los que al respecto escribió, identificó el receptor Soto en su carta. Continuar con inversiones coordinadas en los sistemas de enseñanza y aprendizaje del distrito, así como seguir priorizando la asistencia estudiantil será clave para sostener este progreso. Tal como analizamos el otoño pasado, la administración temporal estatal es una situación provisoria y volver al control local sigue siendo el objetivo final. Dado el progreso logrado hasta la fecha, el departamento desea seguir dialogando con el receptor y el comité escolar sobre cómo mantener y ampliar el progreso del distrito mientras planificamos el retorno del control local al distrito. Para permitir que esas conversaciones avancen, en este momento, decido posponer una determinación formal sobre su petición. Gracias por su labor en nombre de los estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Hoyoke y espero con interés nuestra colaboración continua. Atentamente, Jeffrey C. Riley, comisionado de Educación Primaria y Secundaria. Con copia, Anthony Soto, Erin Brunel-Rosso.
Thank you so much. Um, so I'm gonna share my thoughts. Um, I've had a very eventful week with the mayor. We've done lots of press, lots of phone calls. So while I'm speaking for myself, I know I have his echoes in mind, and I think the shared sentiment is just disappointed and discouraged with the lack of a timeline, with the lack of um clear steps moving forward. Um, we we are symbiotic in our feelings towards the fact that if there is needed time to confer, then those confirmants should have begun after we submitted our petition on September 18th. Um, we also feel as though next time the commissioner comes out here, he needs to meet with us as a full body. No more subcore meetings, uh, meetings off the record. Everything needs to be more formalized and more connected. Um, I think some of our general messaging too is that it's a failed experiment. Receivership is a grand experiment that has failed. Um, the data speaks volumes. Uh, yesterday, the mayor and I were fortunate enough to be invited to speak on a news segment called Getting Answers. And in preparation for that, uh, we were asked to have prepared like our MCAS numbers for third grade and our dropout rates and our graduation rates and you know, when I look at the commissioner's letter and he talks about progress, I I I question and say, where's the progress? When I look at the commissioner's letter and it says like we're like we as a district aren't ready, well, who's we as a district? Because last I know, for the last nine and a half years, we as a school committee haven't had direct say in how we as a district are run. So why aren't we as a district ready to take over having local control when we as a district aren't responsible for the failures that we're seeing in our education system? Plotting the numbers on third grade math and ELA is astonishing. It's depressing. If you look back at 2015, the year we entered receivership, we had 19% of our third grade students meeting expectations in ELA. Today in 2013, or sorry, today in 2023, we're down, we're down to only 13%. Well, 2023 MCAS, right? We're down to 13%. The numbers that should be rising are decreasing, and the numbers that should be decreasing are rising. So where is the state on this? Who is failing the students of Hoyoke? Really, is it the local body that doesn't have say over how our district is run on a daily basis? Students not meeting expectations. In 2015, 31% of students were not meeting expectations. In 2023, 45% of our third grade students are not meeting expectations on ELA. Even if you look at 2019, the year prior to COVID, we have been on a steady decline since. There was minimal to no gains from 2015 to 2019. And if you look at math, it's just more bleak. In 2015, we had 27% of our students meeting expectations in math. Now granted, that's not a number to write home about, but that's the number that got us taken over. And the state is only performing now in 2023 at 10%. So where are we? Why can't we say to the state now, we're taking back our education system because you're failing? You're not getting the gains that you want to see. You're not making the progress that you want to see. So when is it time? How long do we stand here and let the state fail our district? These are the main numbers that they focus on, so these are the main numbers that I'm focusing on. In 2015, we had 31% of our students not meeting expectation, I'm sorry, math. Let me switch. Sorry, guys. Not meeting expectations. In 2015, it was 36% of our students, third graders, not meeting expectations. 2023, 54% of our students are not meeting expectations. I will credit that last year, it was 69. So we have made a little bit of progress there. But we're nowhere near the numbers we need to be with students actually meeting expectations. Again, 2015, it was 10% meeting expect, no, 27 meeting, 27% meeting expectations in math, third grade in 2015, and today it's 10. So those are the main points I want to focus on is like where where's the progress? The state has been here for nine and a half years. That is Erin Brunel's thoughts on that. Um, okay, at the retreat, we discussed submitting a formal letter to the commissioner in response to his letter. I emailed it all to you earlier, and I will read it out loud as well so that we can all uh review this. Uh, today is February 12th, 2024. Dear Mr. Riley, in response to your communication on February 2nd, 2024, we, the undersigned members of the Hoyoke School Committee, wish to advise you that your proposal to defer action on receivership so we can further confer is vague, confusing, and deeply disappointing. On September 18th, 2023, the Hoyoke School Committee voted to petition the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to end receivership. On October 6th, 2023, we started the conversation with you about restoring local control. On December 21st, 2023, Receiver Superintendent Anthony Soto affirmed our wish to end receivership status and laid out a clear and conservative course to begin to bring about that result. Delaying your decision correction, indecision, until the evening of the last day was inconsiderate and frustrating. This feeling was exasperated by the subpar Spanish translation of your message, which demonstrated a lack of consideration for our Spanish-speaking community members. We request a formal meeting with you and DESI staff members to draw up a plan with a timeline that includes all relevant metrics and milestones that must be met to restore local control of our schools. At that time, we would like to review the range and deployment of DESI resources designated to assist us in our effort to transition to local control. Uh, so that's the letter that the mayor's office drafted. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this letter, and then I'll pass it around for signature at the end of the meeting, um, if so moved. I need a motion first. You can you can make the motion. It's okay. Um, the motion would be to adopt the letter and send it to Commissioner Riley.
So moved.
Okay, on the motion is Tensley-Williams, and second, was that gonna be you, Ms. Wilson?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Collmore, you're the second?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Willahan's hand went first.
No, no, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, we're missing a couple of members here tonight. I just want to maybe take a motion to postpone adoption until our next meeting this month.
So on the motion then, uh, is there a second? Hearing none. Ms. Lefave?
Oh, no, Ellie beat me again.
Ms. Wilson?
So I I've learned from my experience that it's better for me to um have some time thinking about something. Um, and since I just got this, I I'd like to think about the wording because I'm gonna be very honest, I don't want to antagonize the individual whose it's his decision for us to come out of receivership. We can all feel this way, but I believe what we put in writing needs to show more, needs to express our frustration, but also our intent to collaborate as we move forward. And it does have that, but I I'm just not at the point right now where I would sign my name to this. I I I think, yeah, I'm just not. Thank you.
Ms. Lefave?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Wilson. Um, for one, um, the start of the letter. At the end of the day, he's still the commissioner, so he should be directed as who he is, which is Commissioner Riley. It should not be formed as Mr. Riley. Um, he holds, he holds a decision. As frustrated as well, maybe it's just like telling your boss to go screw themselves. Are you gonna have a job within five minutes from that? No. So although we may be very upset at the decision or the non-decision, um, we also have to in turn be respectful. And not only that, one of the things that they're watching for is for a division of this committee. And it looks like it's going in that path. And that is a path that we should not be showing because we have been united for many years. Now, the decision or the start of the conversation did not start on October 6th, 2023. The first meeting that was started and when it was initially initiated was back in June of 2021. And Mr. Willahan can can attest to that as well as yourself, Ms. Brunel, because you were at the very first meeting with Mr. Sheehan, with the commissioner. When you petitioned, but the discussions in regards to restoring local control was had since back in 2021. Um, and we do have to include that because one of the things that he's talking about in here is as if there hasn't been any conferring and like he has to continue conversations. So one of the things that you can point out is we've been having these discussions since 2021. At which point at the very first meeting, you said for us to, first, we had to acknowledge as to why we wanted to receivership. That was one of the things that he said. And at that time, we had a retreat that came up, and then we had a follow-up meeting after that and as to how we acknowledge, yes, these are the And as to how we acknowledge, yes, these are the reasons, but this is what we're doing. This is what we're trying to do, but we can't do anything when we don't have a say. But at the end of this day, we may feel or know that this path would work better for our students. But at the end of the day, who has the ultimate decision? It's you. So you're holding us accountable to a decision you made, which was not effective for our very own students. You can't hold us accountable to that. So I think it's really important that you emphasize in a letter. But again, it's respectful, professional way because you got to prove your point at the same time. Is putting in the dates that you met with him and we had these discussions. So when we initiated the petition, it was to now start the movement into restoring local control. Now him saying as if it, there was never a meeting and that was the first time meeting, that's how I read this letter. The other thing is, one moment, Rosalie, okay? The other thing is I would not submit that letter with the letterhead from the Hoyok Public Schools. We have no right to use that letterhead. That belongs to the state. That's what got us in trouble in the first place. That's it.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
I have a question. Mr. Riley, he came down here and Commissioner Riley, he came down here and met with us, remember, one time? And, um, maybe to know us, to meet us, but he did come down here because I remember meeting with him.
That's the date she's referencing in two thousand, no, go ahead.
I'll respond to that. So the initiation of the initial meeting, we wanted it to be where he met with everyone. At that point, he said absolutely not, I will meet with a subquorum. So we created a subquorum. The meeting that he came down with each of us was when we, they were going to be appointing a new receiver because Dr. Sreck was leaving. That's when they met with each and every one of us.
Mr. Collmore?
Can someone clarify for me? Who makes the decision on whether we go into receivership or not?
So the decision to go into receivership, I think, was voted on by the Board of Elementary, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Because I attended the board meeting.
Then if that's the case, that's the case. This letter should not be going to Riley.
No, because, okay, so according to the law, how a district exits receivership? They petition the commissioner. The commissioner decides. If the commissioner says no, we can then appeal the Board of the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education. However, he didn't make a decision, therefore in theory, we cannot appeal. So the decision to enter receivership was by the Board, but the, he made the recommendation to the Board, the Board voted and approved it. But the decision to exit receivership is his. And then if he says no, we could appeal it. If he says yes, then it, it doesn't go to a board vote. According to the law.
Then if that's the way the process goes, it goes to Riley and then he petitions the Board of Education.
The petition to exit receivership goes to the commissioner. The commissioner makes a decision solely on his own. If he says no, this body could then appeal that decision. The appeal would be heard by the Board, the, and then the Board's decision is final. So at this point in time, the Board is not involved. And apparently hasn't talked about Hoyok in months. Yes, Dr. Caballero?
I have a question, um, by chair. The letter was elaborated between you and the mayor, was that my understanding?
Um, basically the mayor and his chief of staff drafted it. I added in the September date because it neglected the September date. Other than that, this was drafted by the mayor's office. So I would suggest anybody that has thoughtful edits to add, feel free to reach out to Stephen Fay or the mayor directly. Um, then they can take another shot at it with everybody's thoughtful input over the next two weeks and we can reevaluate it at the February meeting if, if the motion doesn't pass.
Thank you. I have another question, Ms. LaFave. You mentioned that the, I don't know, it was my understanding. You mentioned that the committee is getting divided or being divided, that it's never, could you expand on that, please?
I think where we stand with the results from the commissioner and how we come back at it. So we have to still stand united, but I will be very firm with you. When it comes to disrespect, I will not stand firm with that. I understand that we're frustrated, but the way that we present ourselves to the commissioner, at the end of the day, he still has a decision. At the end of the day, the Board of Education is also looking at our behavior. Let's not forget that one of those members lives here in Holyoke, okay? And he as well has a vote. So I suggest that, you know, I understand that we're, we're not happy with the result. I'm not happy either. We've been wanting to get out of receivership. I think that we have been a united board. We've always met, not one day have we failed to continue having our meetings. We've worked collaboratively with every single receiver that they've sent us, okay? Um, and there were times that we even bit our tongues and we, and we would say, right? We know that that's not going to work and it didn't work, right? So we'd have to go back to the drawing board again. And we've put out there that do not hold us responsible for that. Because that was a decision at the end that you made. But again, it's how you present it.
You're talking about the letter.
At the letter, what we say in public as well, because it will always go back to him. Don't, don't ever sleep and think that this man is not watching or that there is someone. I remember when we first got into receivership and they were not as the panelists, but you know, like attendees. They were on that other side, watching the meeting from the very beginning to the very end. Okay, so they're watching how we react because what they're trying to see is, is there going to be chaos amongst the school committee? Everybody's to think, y'all talked about the why you're doing this, right? At the, at the retreat? Why are we here is my question? Who are we here for? We're here for the students, right? That should be our first priority. Not our feelings. So we have to, when we're going to want to fight for something, you better present it in a respectful, professional manner with still the students being at the forefront. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones getting affected.
All right, Mr. Willoughby?
Real quick, thank you. Um, yeah, just, I just wanted everyone to just remember that Commissioner Riley was not the commissioner when we were put into receivership in 2015, correct? So he, he inherited this. So I just want to make that known. He's not the one that put us in. We're dealing with him now and, uh, state, but it's still a partnership. No matter how diced it up between school committee, the receiver, state, uh, DESI. So I want to continue that partnership as, as, uh, Fave said. And you know, just try to be more, more positive, you know, in our response. Thank you.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Um, it's not so much what you say as the manner in which you say it. It's not so much the language you use or the tones on which you convey it. Come here, I sharply said, and the baby coward and wept. Come here, I smiled, he looked at me and straight to my lap, he cried. So it's, it's how you say it. And I was raised, if you can't say anything good, you think first, don't say anything.
Dr. Caballero?
When I was little.
Um, so sitting here, I am here. This is why I am here. Because my constituents elected me to be their voice. And if we say, if we restrict ourselves from saying what our constituents were number four, want us to say, how are we representing our students? If their voices are not being heard the way they want their voices to be heard. You see what I'm trying to say? And, uh, yes, there are manners and emotions, but I think what, um, we are also in control of, um, the ways in which people want us to speak and say what is going on with their lives. Because it's been decades of their voices and needs and wants without being heard. But I think it's also, and, and, uh, and I hope that that, uh, interjection that you said that we're, the, the committee is being divided, you know? It's not about what we say here, but the way the letter is being presented, I hope that this is not, uh, I hope that this is a forum for us to be, I don't know, realistic and be honest about why we are here. We have a student here who spoke his mind. And I think that he's here and he said it. We are the ones who understand what is going on with your students. And they rely on our work and the way we present our cases. Because so far, nothing has changed.
Ms. LaFave, and then we're going to move on to vote on the motion.
So I respect what you're saying, um, Dr. Caballero. Um, but I will say something, okay? Um, in regards to that you're the voice for your constituents, absolutely. I think they put us into these seats for that. But it's also you, you, you educating and you're advocating and empowering, but you empower them in the right way. You don't want them to judge you on what comes out of your mouth. Right? So if we are to say specifically how they want to say it and it's in a way that is going to impact us from getting our schools, at, at the end, what is it that we're, what is it that we want to do? Go ahead and say it, knowing that we will never get our schools back, so we're doing more damage? Or do we say, I understand your frustration, but why don't we try wording it this way? Because you know what, at the end of the day? No matter how you look at it, yes, we've always had to learn how to speak. But I was taught and I'm very old school, you still respect your elders, right? You still, it's Mr. To this day, I call Dr. Sreck, Dr. Sreck, and he'll tell me to my face, Mildred, stop calling me doctor. Call me Steve, but I can't do that. Ms. Kleshin is still Ms. Kleshin to me. It's not going to be Jackie. Because that's how I was brought up and raised by my parents, okay? We got to start, if we have to start educating and bringing that to our people, because again, they're watching us. And that's one thing that I don't like is for them to watch and to talk and then we get affected at the very end.
Thank you so much, Ms. LaFave.
I'm going to make an overarching comment on that though. Um, I personally don't feel as though anybody on this committee is disrespecting the commissioner and his position. Um, however, I feel as though the time for playing nice and beating around the bush on the factual issues. We can't just keep pushing things under the rug. Like we have to bring the real issues to light and discuss them. And that is the whole reason why we're advocating for local control. So that way as a body, we can advocate for and do as though what we feel is best for our community. So, uh, Mr. Collmore?
At this time, I do tend it to table this until the next. So people can really get into this letter that you, and, and the board, you, you listened to the board at our conference. And we instructed you to write a letter to the state. But some have questions on some of the subjects that are put in there. And I, I, like I say, I move that we table this matter until the next.
Okay. So on the motion to table, any further discussion? So this negates the original motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. I would encourage you all to reach out to the mayor directly to, uh, discuss the letter in detail and suggest edits, uh, as it was his office that drafted it. All right, moving along. Yes.
Can we get a copy of this letter? All the members?
You can have this one. I emailed it out, uh, this afternoon. Can we pass that? Uh, no, uh, we're not signing it. That's the mayor's response. Um, okay. So moving on to new business then. So, uh, school committees, subcommittees, um, I will take, I will entertain a motion to take local control. Sorry, misspoke. I will undertake a motion that we approve the name changes of finance and operations and policy and governance. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Point of clarification, I'm sorry. We're voting on all?
Nope, we're voting to approve the name changes to finance and operations and policy and governance. All those in favor was approved, none were opposed. The motion carries, okay. DEI remains the same, no, no further discussion there. Joint School Committee and City Council remains the same. At our retreat, we discussed potentially adding more subcommittees, uh, to our committee schedule. And one of those subcommittees was the potential for local control. Maybe that's not the name, maybe it's local control slash receivership. We can, uh, discuss that openly if necessary. Um, but I would entertain a motion to add a local control slash receivership policy subcommittee to the subcommittee roster? No, the, sorry, the local control slash receivership as a subcommittee to the Hoyok School Committee.
Make a motion.
Thank you. So the motion's made by Ms. Ellie Wilson and seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any further discussion? Mr. Willoughby?
Thank you. Do we want to add, um, other factions to that committee as maybe non-voting members at least, maybe someone from the mayor's office or someone from the city council? Or make them a voting member?
So I can answer that for you.
Well, thank you.
Yep. So at the retreat, we discussed whether or not we wanted this to be a subcommittee, an accessory committee or a task force. And the general consensus that was that it would be a subcommittee of the school committee. And then that subcommittee would generate additional task force to engage local community and stakeholders. Ms. LaFave?
Why not have it as an ad hoc meeting and that way they can have members? Still gets reported back out.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I sort of agree with expand the role. Someone from, you know, Mr. Soto can put a couple of his administrators on it, you know, expand it. I think we could expand it instead of just this board here who, you know, we've all had our say, we're not quite experts in the process, but I think expanding, expanding the voice, I think will be similar voices, it might add some, um, expertise to it. Thank you.
So the reason, um, just giving further context, the reason at, during discussion when we talked about it for having it be a subcommittee, um, and, and then the, the goal of the subcommittee would be to organize around how, where do we go from here, right? The next steps in helping to facilitate through the process. So if somebody wants to alter the motion, by all means, Ms., Ms. Wilson?
So I, I do remember, Ms. Brunel, very clearly, um, that we did discuss this at length, um, as to what type of, uh, group. No, I'm not saying that we're not changing our minds now, but the thought was that, um, you know, control our destiny. It should be the school committee leading this. Um, if we want to, we can do surveys, we can have, you know, different groups, we can invite them um, to speak at the meetings, participate based on different topics. But, um, since this is, we're seeking to have control and seeking local control, that it should be school board members leading this and then asking people to share it as we go along. That's what, that was my understanding and I'm, I'm still behind that theory.
All right, if I don't see any further discussion, um, on the motion to create, uh, did anybody make a motion? No. So I would entertain a motion to create.
Somebody did, right?
Okay, correct. Sorry, we're actually in the discussion period. Okay, so pending no further discussion, uh, on Okay, so pending no further discussion, uh, all those in favor of creating a local control subcommittee meeting, a subcommittee? Sorry, guys, I keep adding multiple titles to that, within our school committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Secondly, we discussed the potential of recreating leadership and accountability as a subcommittee. If that's still the wish, if I would entertain a motion to create leadership and accountability as an additional subcommittee.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? I have some points on further discussion, I think this is premature personally. Um, I think the lead, the main focus of leadership and accountability is to review a superintendent and we don't currently have a superintendent to review. Um, I also feel like um that's a lot of subcommittees for this body. Um, to to expect to meet regularly, um, I'm trying to get the subcommittees to meet monthly. And that's a lot of meetings, so that's just what I'm gonna say on that. Uh, Ms. LaFave?
I mean, yeah, it it is a lot of uh subcommittees, but um at the end of the day, we were deemed as the watchdogs. And we hold accountable uh whoever's not not meeting where they're supposed to be. And when you're looking, okay, so our um, how would you say it? The evaluation of the superintendent, it's not like the the re- the commissioner is gonna accept it and say, you know, I agree with what you're saying. But at the end of the day, I think we can still evaluate the commission, the the receiver. Um, evaluate it against the the turnaround plan and making sure that we're meeting at least the goals are on the right track. Um, obviously, whatever it is that he might not give you what he what what to monitor benchmark. But we can pick the benchmarks and create our own if you wanted to go that route. But I mean, that's complete, yeah, you do have a lot, but if you're looking at taking over control, you need to start um being able to do the whole accountability piece.
Anybody else? Mr. Willihan?
Thank you again, um, do we want to maybe combine those those two committees, local control slash leadership accountability? Make it one committee? Kind of banter those ideas back and forth?
Ms. Tensley Williams?
I have something to say, but at the end, okay?
Yeah. Ms. Wilson?
So I'm, I would like to um I I I'm changing my mind, I think our focus right now should be on local control. I I I am gonna shift my mind, um, and that leadership at least and accountability, we can wait until six months or so to start thinking about that again. But I think that our focus should be the local control right now. Um, and so, you know, I I'm gonna I'm gonna ask that we table the leadership and accountability subcommittee.
All right, so on the motion to table adding leadership and accountability, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, um, leadership and accountability is tabled for now. Um, uh, next under new business is meeting frequency. I passed out proposed calendar for 2024. Uh, at the retreat, we discussed going back to by mon- uh, not, I keep saying by monthly, I'm so sorry. Twice a month meetings uh starting immediately. So our next meeting would be February 26th. Uh, we discussed going on the second and the fourth Mondays of the month, which helps to avoid some of the Monday holidays. So that would be March would be the 11th and the 25th, April is the 8th and the 22nd. Uh, May is the 13th and the 28th, as the 27th is Memorial Day. June with graduation and so many events, I propose maybe we only meet once. I don't know how you guys feel about the 10th, that would be the second Monday in June. Um, the third Monday, I think, okay, hold on, I see hands, I got you guys. Um, July, we don't meet. Um, August, again, in consideration of vacations, I I left that kind of open for discussion. If you guys have proposed dates, we can certainly meet twice or we could just meet once. Um, September would be the 9th and the 23rd, October would be the 15th, as the 14th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And the 28th, November would be the 12th and the 26th. And December, uh, again, possibly with the busy holiday, maybe we meet just once. Ms. LaFave and Ms. Wilson, raise your hands on the exact same time, Ms. Wilson?
Go.
So uh Passover is April uh 22nd.
Isn't Passover like a multiple length holiday?
So Passover starts at sundown to sundown from the 21st to the 22nd. Thank you, I'm glad, look, I love that, thank you.
So would you propose meeting on the 23rd would suffice?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. LaFave?
Put here for June, um, one meeting, we also have the budget hearing.
Do we have a date for the budget hearing?
Um, you and I can
Okay.
solidify that on our next check-in.
No, well, it's typically done at the beginning, so I don't know if you want that towards the end or you're gonna put them together, I don't know.
It's up to us, that's why I'm bringing it up for discussion, cuz I, you know, I don't, do we have dates for graduation yet? Sure we do, right?
I can bring them to the next, yeah.
Third, May 30th?
I think one of, one of the changes that Holyoke High is proposing and driven by the students, they wanna have, um, they don't want to do it on Sunday, wanna have it on a Friday. Uh, we already have, so like last year, Deans was on a Thursday and then Holyoke High's was on a Friday. So they're proposing to do Thursday and Friday, so we can, um, I could get those dates.
How long does Holyoke High graduation?
They just, you know, the the students want it, want it on a day where they can, they don't want to have to come back on a Sunday and do it, so.
Yeah, kick it off, a good weekend.
We can, um, you know, we can, uh, once we solidify those dates, I can get them to you guys.
Okay, so do All right, that, who else had a hand up, Ms. LaFave?
Um, you're pointing out that it's the students, but um, that's not what's going around social media. So can you guys like really send out a letter to the families and really emphasize this was student-driven? Because what was posted was that all of a sudden the tradition, um, they wanna stop doing it on Sundays.
Yeah.
So it's being pointed as like it's administration.
Okay.
So if it is student-driven, I suggest putting out a letter that the families are aware that this is what the students want.
Um, all right, anybody else? All right, so can we pick a date for August while we're all sitting here? I wasn't sure if people vacationed a lot. Um, do we feel like we need two meetings to kick off August? Are we good with one? Um.
I would say one.
So if one, then I usually suggest the third mon- or the third Monday, which would be the 19th. August. I don't see any objections, so we'll go with that. Okay. Um.
Can I just clarify, November, you have it on uh Tuesday, the 26th is a Tuesday?
That could just be me messing up looking at numbers.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, yeah, both of those are Tuesdays, look at that. Also, the 11th is Veterans' Day, right? So that would be on the 12th. And then the other one should definitely be the 25th, sorry about that. 25th, okay. Um, I will send this out to everybody and does, do you have any objections to this? So like, do you have any major dates that you know you won't be available?
Yeah, I don't know which, like, I don't know that I need, I'm gonna be at every single one of them. So I know I'm gonna be at the monthly one where the superintendent report is. And depending on the agenda topic and whether or not I need to, you guys need me at.
If there's any glaring dates, just get back to me.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. All right, so moving along then, um, ongoing business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 1:22.
Motion to approve.
I'll, a second, second, uh, Ms. Williams on the second motion approve, uh, motion made by Ms. LaFave. Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None. Um, updates from subcommittees, uh, we already took care of approving those. Finance Committee?
We're gonna set up a meeting for March 8th.
All right, thank you, Mr. Willihan. Uh, I believe you told me this morning, Ms. LaFave, you don't have a date yet from City Councilor?
Yeah, I sent the dates that was provided to me that the uh superintendent is available, so I'm waiting to hear back from the chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, diversity, equity and inclusion, I know that uh, J- sorry, not gonna use her first name. I know that Dr. Rivera Cologne had a subcommittee meeting this week, she is at a conference today, so she will uh brief us on our 2:26 meeting. Um, ch 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 ch. Uh, we can't, no, she asked that we do it at the next one. Cuz we don't.
Then motion to table?
Uh, yeah.
Sick.
Thank you, so we're gonna table approving the minutes from her DEI till she's here. Um, okay, thank you. Uh, the mayor had to leave, but um, in uh in ongoing business, you have an update from the purchase of High Street, you know what's going on with that a bit, Anthony? Can you provide a quick update on what's what or should we put this on the next agenda?
Yeah, I think that this needs to be tabled for the mayor discussion, but I included in the packet is an appraisal of of the of 225 High Street. And some um documentation on there of what they're calling a consensual taking. So the I, the the idea would be that, um, you you met, we just reviewed uh, the budget and what makes up the budget and it's net school spending plus transportation plus leases. If the city were able to purchase either 57 Suffolk or another building, like it it would be a a smart long, down the road decision, because then they wouldn't have to, in addition to net school spending and transportation, add money to the school department's budget for uh leases, because any lease is greater than three years old. Um, cannot be a part of net school spending. If anybody was here in 2016 or 17 when I was here, um, the city council cut the the central office lease from the budget and asked me to explore options, we put a task force together. I put in front of the city council eight different options that they could, that they could move on. Um, I think they were waiting for the mayor at the time to make a recommendation and that didn't happen. So uh, in the meantime, I, we were able to consolidate our offices from five floors to two floors. Um, and cut the lease in half at the time. Uh, and uh, we, that's the where we've been operating since since that that time. And no action has been taken uh from either the mayor or the city council on that. So I think this is the mayor trying to uh take action on a a longstanding uh issue that the the city council has expressed in in terms of the 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 central office leasing space. This would solve that, but there's definitely an initial investment that that would have to be made.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to officially table that to our 220.
Till next meeting, the entire 60, high, 225 High Street purchase.
Thank you, second uh motion made by Ms. LaFave, seconded by Mr. Willihan, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Um, attendance slash chronic absenteeism update. Um, I know that Ms. LaFave asked for this to be more detailed, so I'm gonna let her speak if she'd like and add any comments or concerns or, Ms. LaFave?
Yeah, thank you, I'm Madam Vice Chair, so go uh going back on chronic absenteeism, something that the commissioner continues to talk about. But as it's, it's already known, it doesn't matter whether it's excused, unexcused, chronic absenteeism is chronic absenteeism, period. Um, so I was looking at the overall, um, again, we compare it to last year's specific timeframe. But when I look at last month, again, it increased, um, it increased, you know, it's minimal percentage, it's not even a full percent. But we're still going up, you know, um. I know we have the whole model strive for five, but we've gotta be more creative and we've actually gotta be monitoring this and we've gotta be asking the questions. Right, because the expectation is is that we're on this, because this is one of the indicators. Um, when it comes to state takeovers and the assessment or, you know, the evaluation of how a district is doing. The other thing is, when I looked at the the reasons, I know that there was one where it said confiscation. Um, it, in 2023, um, confiscation was 20, uh, was 36. In 2024, it's 2055. First of all, what are they confiscating, number one? Because then under the most common, it just says 18, so I'm 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 a little bit confused there, um, cuz if we said it was 2055 so far in 2024 for confiscation, but then for under most common, it's only 18, what happened the remaining 2037? Um, and that is page. So if you can just, I mean, I don't, again, I don't know if maybe it was a typo, may- maybe you meant to say 25 and not 2055? Um.
Well, that's on page five.
No, not page, oh, I know what you're doing.
But 27 overall, page 27 overall.
Page 27 overall. I was going the right direction.
There's a huge amount.
Right, yeah, so if you look at confiscation 36, 2023?
Is it?
It's, I guess for consequences, so they confiscated something, but what did you confiscate?
It's not.
It's, well, it's because when you're looking at causes of of why there being um, so like those who are suspended.
Right, but just to be clear, you're going into the the disciplinary notes, right? Okay, I'm just trying to follow.
It all falls together, because it goes with referrals, it goes. So I asked for a breakdown, right? And I said, why are why are students, there's a medical, non-medical, is this pension, what it is? You're giving me referrals? You're giving me, so I'm looking at the big picture, if you just want me to stay focused on one thing, I can be focused on one thing, but then I'm not serving a purpose.
I'm, no, I'm not asking you to focus on anything, that there's an attendance report that I've broken out and the the data you're referring to is not a part of the attendance report. It's about, it's a part of the SEL referral report, which is the the next topic on the agenda. Um, confiscation and would include, you know, if we, I I would have you know, I would, I would uh uh imagine that the majority of those confiscations are telephone. So now that, you know, it, you know, last year, there wasn't a lot of those because, you know, we didn't have the yonder bag and you know, uh, if if a student, you know, was using their phone in the classroom. Um, you know, and and very rarely did it, did it lead to confiscating their phone. Whereas now with the yonder bag policy, there's confiscat- um, you know, if if a student's found with a phone, you know, which means they they're not using their yonder bag and they 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 were hiding a phone either in their sock or saying they didn't have a phone. Um, when that's found, it's confiscated and returned to the student at the end of the day. Um, and if that happens a a a couple of times, you know, a phone call goes to their parent.
Um, so I think it would be beneficial maybe, moving forward, to have referral discipline data. So H below D, like immediately following, because to Mildred's point, right? Discipline affects absenteeism sometimes.
Well, suspension does.
Right, so.
Not all the referrals are suspension.
Right, but I I understand why she's correlating the two, so just moving forward when we're constructing the agenda, let's just have those two immediately following.
Okay.
Um, so that way, when we're reviewing the data, it's easier to look at. Ms. LaFave, did you have more thoughts?
Because the other one was just laughing.
Okay, um, so with, in regards to chronic absenteeism, do you feel as though it's broken down in the way that you want it to see? Is there anything else you want to see that's not there?
No, I mean, it's I just think that we really need to to keep mind open, like I said, if I just think that we really need to, to keep mind open, like I said, if this is what the Commissioner's looking at. So if this is how they're judging all the schools, then why are we not writing a resolution and asking for that not to be? For it to be, especially with medical experience, right? And those who are, um, even if it's related to their, their disability, um, you can do a manifestation, um, of, of disability, um, meeting. But how many, how, how many families know about that? Are we even? Maybe you are, and maybe you did.
It's mandated.
But it's not always done. And that's, that's the sad part, um, and families aren't aware that because of their child's, um, disability that they can request them a manifestation hearing. So, I mean, and that's at ten days, I mean, but it took ten days, which already we're talking, there, there we're at, we're almost there with the, with your ten percent. Um, so, you know, it's, it's just we really, you, we should be advocating for the way that, that chronic absenteeism is being, um, uh, like judged or used against districts, it should be modified.
Ms. Wilson, did you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, so manifest, uh, determinations is mandated for any student who has an IEP. Um, if they're going to exceed ten days, you have to have a meeting determine that the IEP is being followed, that, um, they're getting the services required and that the action that's going to send them over or multiple, even after that point, um, is not, uh, a direct result of their disability. Um, so that is a requirement by law, um, for that. Um, but I, I, I can agree, while I understand the state's overarching viewpoint is any day away, whether it's excused or not, is away from learning. I understand that concept, um, but I think there should be some sort of like secondary note that be allowed to note that, you know, these were based upon excuses. But then I often say, well, would a more affluent, uh, area be allowed to get more excused because they're able to go to the doctor more? Than our, you know, low-income families who don't go to the doctors as much? So are we getting dinged? You know what I mean? So it's like this, it's a vicious circle when we enter these excused versus unexcused. You know, we have, because of, you know, low-income access to medical care, access to providers, things of that sort, all come into play for getting that excuse.
Getting in the queue on a busy day at the pediatrician's office.
Yeah, so that's all, so I'm just, you know, it's just something, and maybe, maybe absenteeism, um, can be a lengthier discussion in a future meeting.
So I think what I'm hearing is that this, to me, sounds like it fits very well within the DEI Subcommittee. So I'd like to entertain a motion that chronic absenteeism gets referred to DEI to be discussed at a, at a more detailed manner and to be determined how to better address moving forward and, and plans, cause it, that sounds to me like the perfect Subcommittee for this, so.
Motion.
I need a motion by Ms., uh, Dr. Caballero, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any further discussion? No? Okay, great. All those in, yep, discussion?
Just, um, to point out, I was looking at the, um, you know, the website, DESI, Mass Department, you know, and they talk about chronic absence in student attendance. They have a lot of resources here. Um, we can download tools and they talk about family engagement, attendance resources for districts and school, department attendance, and drop out reporting guidance, department initiatives, rethinking discipline initiative, you know, social, emotional behavioral academy. They talk about systemic student support academy, my career. So there's a lot of resources, there are a lot of resources out there that perhaps we should be tapping into, uh, communicating to different departments and engaging the families and, and all this.
And the Secretary of Education, Pat Tutwiler's, Pat Tutwiler's office just sent out, uh, a, a reinvigorated communication around attendance. So there's some information there as well, so, you know, within the Subcommittee, could certainly invite whoever from central office focuses on attendance in the conversation, find out what they're working on, um, and, you know, strategize from there. So, okay, so on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that, so moved. Um, so, um, chronic absenteeism sent to DEI. We'll continue with the updates, uh, and then they'll handle it, uh, on their, uh, separately, so. Um, also in the FYI staffing update, Mr. Soto, did you wanna add anything to that?
Nope, just an FYI in the packet.
Alright. Seeing no hands, out-of-state field trips, um, uh, we presented with the, well, we don't formally approve it, but the dual-language program freshman class is going to Puerto Rico. Any discussion on that? No? Alright. Um, my daughter's super excited, I'll just add that. Um, student activity approval, non-applicable, um, referral discipline data. If anybody has any discussion points, feel free to raise your hand and I will stop. Uh, middle school building update, uh, quick update, we secured our general contractor, so that's super exciting. Uh, so Fontaine, by the way, just to go on record, I didn't think I needed to do this, but I am not related in any way, shape, or form to any of the folks who own or operate Fontaine Builders. Fontaine is my maiden name, but I am under no relation that I know of within the last four generations. I, I, I could look further if people want, but I asked my memey, she confirmed. Um, I know somebody said somewhere that it was a conflict, I just wanna formalize that I am not related to Fontaine Builders. Um, so that's super exciting. Uh, we might be having a press conference in the next couple of weeks, um, at the site to announce like the start of, um, what are we calling it?
Groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking, thank you guys. Sometimes my brain stops working. Uh, so we might be having a groundbreaking, uh, the first week of March, I'll keep you all posted on that. Um, our next meeting is this coming Thursday, so the fifteenth, if anybody cares to join us. Um, other than that, let us know if you have any questions. The meetings are all archived on the Holyoke City's website. Um, moving right along, school panorama survey focus, um, FYI, so this includes the updates from the staff and principals on how they plan to put the panorama survey information to work.
Yeah, at the last, at the last, uh, school committee meeting, um, I had mentioned that the whole purpose of panorama is not just to take a survey, but for us to just reflect on what our students are saying, what our teachers are saying, what our staff are saying, what our families are saying, and I gave an overall takeaway from the district perspective. But I also named that, like, principals are doing the same thing within their schools. So I had asked all principals to, uh, uh, as part of their panorama survey data, for them to highlight like what stuck out to them and, uh, where they're leaning in, uh, uh, with students, with families, with staff, and with teachers, and that information is, it was tabulated at the end of your packet and you can see what each school's reflection is, um, and, and what, what they're doing, which is really the most important part. It's not presenting the survey data or anything like that, it's like, here's what we're hearing and here's what we're gonna be doing, here's what we're leaning into. So, um, I think they did a good job putting, putting that together for the school committee based on your request.
Ms. LaFave?
Yeah, I saw that each school did like the glow grow and, and next step. Um, but my question will be more towards, okay, what's timeframe? And how are we following up with this? How do we know, uh, whether they've met the goal, not the goal? Do they have to revamp it, change it, modify, however you wanna call it? The other, uh, question is, who is a part of this? Uh, is, I know each school is supposed to have a school improvement council that also includes, um, members from, from the community. Um, I know Kelly School had one when Ms. Lashine was there, so, and then that's where you have this improvement plan, and that should be done annually? Is that still being done?
Every school has a school council. I wouldn't say that they're all very well attended, but they exist and they, they meet. Um, whether or not-
They just, and they have community members that participate, or it's just-
Some schools do. Yeah, it, it, it all depends on the school, like-
Okay.
Some schools are, are, in terms of engagement, they have more engagement than others. On your first question, there's not a timeline on this. We do panorama every year, but I will say that in May, all, all principals are, as part of this, they wanna, there's, there's a lot of principals that feel like October and November, especially after a rezoning year, they're trying to establish culture, and we took this, like, in October and November. Um, I, when I talked to, as part of the quarterly SIP reviews, some of the principals were like, I wish we could take this now because like, like, we're gonna be taking it in May, right? So, um, we're not gonna do the whole survey, but the, the one, the questions that are really important to each principal, they're gonna design a, a survey around that just to measure themselves, um, on that. But, you know, this was a year where I, you know, I expected, um, culture to be difficult, especially in, in October and November. Just moved whole school communities and all of that, so, uh, the principals are, are taking this seriously, but also, you know, many of them feel like, man, I wish we didn't do it in October, cause there's things that I, I know people aren't feeling this way now, um, in some cases. I'm not saying that that's widespread.
So the reason why I ask is because one of them has gathered more information, what group of people is this? So if you're telling me that it's not something like we're gonna measure, then when are we ever gonna find out who that group of people is? And what do they feel they need more autonomy on? So to me, there should be benchmarks to date, but we all do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's the staff category. That, that could be three people, right? Like, got teachers and then you might have, you know, the, the office staff or the custodians that, that said, yeah, when decisions are made, uh, I don't feel included. So a princ- the principal wants to, you know, meet with some staff and say, hey, like, this was rated really low, like what decisions have I made that impact you, that you feel you should have been included on? So, um, so that like moving forward, you know, you know, you feel more included.
Anything else? It was your hand up? Yeah, I know, I got you, don't worry. Anybody else? Mr. Colomore?
Document here pretending to take over the, please that, uh-
So that, that was tabled because the mayor is not here and it's his, his doing. So we're gonna discuss it on two twenty-six, okay? Okay, so I'm sorry, where was I? Panorama Survey Focus, okay. So announcements, um, we have a DPAC meeting on Tuesday, February thirteenth, that's tomorrow, it's six PM. Middle School Building Committee Meeting is Thursday, February fifteenth at six PM, that's on Zoom, all are welcome to join. Um, SE PAC Know Your Rights Session on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, from five-thirty to seven-thirty on Zoom. Who would somebody reach out to to register if they wanted to?
Oh, on Facebook, they've been posting as the Special Education Department, so they also have links for them to register.
So if somebody wasn't on Facebook, they could just call the Special Education Department at Central Office?
As long as they have computer access to, because it's all on Zoom.
Okay, great.
But I know that Alas de Familias has been holding in-person sessions.
Great, so people can, can, okay, great, awesome. Thank you for the information. Alright, so, uh, Ms. LaFave asked that I mention that there's positions, um, on MASC or Division Five. Um, if you care to elaborate, feel free, but there's, uh, Board of Directors positions, gaming officials, um, a ski for sports, so ski, softball, swim, and volleyball all have openings.
Yeah, so for Division Five, we're all set. We already have all of the officers for that, but for the MAS, for the MIAA positions, it's Board of Directors, we have one position available, gaming officials, um, committee, the ski, the softball, the swim, and the volleyball. Um, those are the open committees. Mr. Colomore, I know that you've mentioned that you're still part of the volleyball, this renews every year. You have to submit your requests. Meetings are in person, um, they've been meeting, so have you been to a meeting and submitted a report?
I have, not received any report of when a meeting is being held.
Okay.
And I'm not even sure if I'm still on the committee.
Yeah, no, you're not, it's, it's an open position on the committee. Um, as, as I mentioned, it's, I guess it's renewed every year. Your interest to serve, you have to submit every year that you're still interested to be on a specific committee with MIAA, but you still ha- the, they're still having meetings. I, I already see here that their next meetings is gonna be February fourteenth and May ninth, um, so far. And I guess they're all in Franklin County, uh, where they, where they, um, have their meetings. So, I mean, if that is something that you want, you just have to submit a request, um, to be considered to serve on the volleyball committee, but then for each meeting, you have to submit a report for the delegate assembly.
Which I already have called Glenn and told him I wish to be, uh, stay on that committee.
Okay, so are you gonna be able to attend the February fourteenth meeting? There's one on February fourteenth? Oh, it's actually Wednesday. Yeah.
No, I won't be able to make it. I wasn't notified, so.
Alright, we'll have to talk about that after Mr. Colomore, okay?
I'm sorry, what meeting are you referencing tomorrow at six? Is that Zoom or?
That is a Zoom.
Zoom, so that's still gonna happen even though tomorrow's technically a snow day?
It's DPAC.
DPAC. Okay, alright, well that covers our agenda, folks.
Can I just add one thing?
No.
It's, it's related to upcoming events, so, you know, every two weeks, we issue an addition of Juntos para Holyoke, Together for Holyoke, and in there at the end is all of our important upcoming events. So I know that some of you have ex- have expressed to me, like, I didn't know this was happening or that was happening. We try to capture everything in those upcoming events, so, um, you know, they don't always mirror what's on here, but a lot of work goes into those, so if you're ever like interested in like upcoming events, make sure you, you're looking at the school committee agenda and the Together for Holyoke edition, because I think between those two, most of the stuff that's going on around the district, you'll be able to see.
On that note, Tuesday, senior night for girls' basketball at the high school. Um, I need to know who wants to do the spelling bee for Homework House in April, um, and then if anybody's not marching or marching, let me know. You, you would need a sash, I think, you're the only one. I'll ask you how we get those. Uh, Mr. Willian? Okay.
Thank you. Um, real quick, just a follow-up on what Joe Soto said, uh, our files are on the website.
Yep. Also, to, sorry, to note on the parade, if anybody has a sash that's like gross or old or, you know, technically, I think we used to turn them back in, but if anybody needs a sash, let me know. Mr. Colomore?
Yeah, I, I have an extra sash.
You have an extra? Alright, cool. I'll grab it from you. Awesome. Alright, Ms. Rosalie Tensley Williams?
It's all.
Yeah, well, some of us are wool, some of us are fabric, I mean, it'd be nice if we all matched. Go ahead.
I would like the spelling.
Oh, thanks. I'll count you in for that. Alright, great.
When is it?
It's in April, I don't have the date offhand, but I know it's in April. Uh, this year, it's, uh, I think this, I think it's at Ray Street, is it, or is it at? It's usually at Mill One in Open Square. I will confirm, I will send everybody an email. You're welcome. Alright. It's in April.
That's some info.
April twenty-fifth. I see it's changed, that Gayway City Arts this time.
Where is that?
Yeah, on Ray Street.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'm sorry, guys, once the, once it's moved, that's it. I'm so sorry. I know, I'm so sorry, I didn't ask for the motion, I'm so sorry. I apologize, but technically speaking, according to the rules- I apologize, but technically speaking, according to the rules, once it's motioned, we can't, once it's motioned, we can't continue. I'm sorry. I didn't ask for the motion. She said it out loud. I'm so sorry. I know. I'm sorry. Next time, Ms. Williams, I apologize. Please save it for the twelfth. Um, on the first, please save it for the twenty-sixth. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, folks. Meeting is officially adjourned. Have a great night.